Thank you.
So Chef Cabreros told me that he was in line at 5:15 a.m.
Yeah?
And that he was still number two.
So there's more, there's lots. Where do we go to find that list?
Ask Craig, I guess.
Craig?
Yeah. But that's both outstanding and, aw, man, you guys have to stay alive.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's good news to me.
Yeah.
Sensitive.
Chair Simon, I have now, it's 9:00 a.m.
I got 8:59, so let's go ahead and, everything's ready to go?
Jake, is everything ready on your end?
Yep, we are good to go.
Okay.
Waiting room needs to be open?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the January 5th, 2021 Lake County Board of Supervisors meeting, first meeting of the year to order. And as usual, we're gonna stand for a moment of silence. And I think one of our board members, Tina Scott, has a moment of silence, so go ahead and start.
Thank you, Chair Simon. Yes, today I would like to dedicate our moment of silence to Cliff Rzika, who passed on December 17th, 2020. He was a longtime resident of Lake County, who was passionate about economic development and giving back to his community.
Okay. Supervisor Brown, would you please lead us in the Pledge Allegiance? Supervisor Brown there?
It appears he's here. He may be having audio problems.
Yeah, it looks like he's here unmuted. I'm not seeing any activity on his mic.
Okay, well, if he wants to do it again later, we'll let him do that. But then let's have Supervisor Sabatier, could you please lead us in the Pledge Allegiance?
Love to. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Can we make sure that we do a mic check with Supervisor Brown?
Looks like he's coming back in, Mr. Chair, so maybe he's having technical difficulties. I think we should just wait a moment and make sure he's here.
Yes, absolutely.
And Supervisor Pesca, supervisor-elect Pesca, has the video on now too, thank you. And here's Rob, great?
Yeah, we see you, Rob.
And I see you.
There you go.
Perfect.
Apologize about the Pledge Allegiance there. We wanted to keep going and know, sorry about the technical difficulties.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move right along into our 9:00 a.m. item. We're gonna go ahead and just move right down and get right to it here. Our 9:00 a.m. item. Today is, we're gonna go ahead and do a remarks from outgoing, or 6.19 a.m. item, remarks from outgoing Supervisor Brown and presentation and commendations there too. We're gonna also present a proclamation. So glad to have you here, and we're just gonna get right into this.
Well, thank you. I could spend another 20 years just thanking everybody that I owe gratitude to, but can't do that. Everybody wants to be missed, but you can't miss me unless I leave. So I gotta hurry and get this done so we can get out of here and you guys can get to work. I would like to thank, first of all, all the county employees and department heads that have worked so hard to do the work of the board. You know, I've said this before, the board comes up with all these great ideas, and then it's up to the employees to actually implement them. And whether they be great ideas or crazy ideas, that's what they do. And they do it willingly and not with a lot of pay, and I really appreciate them. I know at one meeting we were at, we talked about developing relationships and that type of thing. And while relationships in this job are very important, there's nothing more important than friendships. And I've developed so many friendships over the last 20 years plus with many of our county employees, past and present. And I know the new board, well, the board members that I've had the privilege to work with for the last four years, two years, missed out on a lot of the department heads that I was able to work with. We've got some good department heads now, but I was fortunate to be able to work with folks like Kelly Cox and Kim Klymeier, Jerry Shaw, Mark Dellinger, Cameron Reeves. I mean, it goes on and on. And they were all replaced with good people, Matt Perry. But those friendships are, I would have never had had it not been for this job, and it's very valuable to me. I'd also like to thank my constituents and the folks of Lake County for putting their faith in me. I know I frustrated a lot of people over the years, but I think I created some debate that was important and maybe had caused some pause to think about some of the things that we did in order to move things forward. I didn't always get it right, but I didn't always get it wrong either, so I'm proud of that. And I was very fortunate to be entrusted through nine elections by my constituents, and I'm very proud of that and honored that they allowed me to do that. Beyond the county and beyond my constituents, more other friendships that were created at state and federal level that I wouldn't have had had it not been for this job. You know, Mike Thompson, Brad O'Narato come to mind, Senator McGuire. You know, we've been through a lot together, but we've been through it. And we came out the other end. And I know things are tough right now, and I know the board and the county's in good hands with the board, with Jessica, I'm very proud of her. I think she's gonna bring a lot to the board that we haven't had. So I'm looking forward to that, and I'm looking forward, if she needs me for anything at all, if anybody needs me for anything, I'm here. This is my COVID project you're at right now, my new home. And if somebody could please let Joan know that I do have all the proper permits for it, I'd appreciate that too. But most importantly, I would like to thank my family, who's sacrificed as much or more than I have. You know, I signed up for this job. We all sign up for it. We're a small fraternity of board members and past board members. And we're the only ones that really realize what we go through with our families. And the families go through a lot. I'm proud to have my family here with me today. Got Stephen, Michaela, Tyler, Juliet will be here, Jordan, and Julianne's here, and Angela, and my grandkids, Hayden, Brandon, Benny, and Gracie and Lily, Alexander, Aiden, Brody, and Charlie. And I miss anybody? My mom. My mom's here with me, too. So thank you all, and we'll be seeing you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Brown. What I'd like to do, obviously, is we have a proclamation that we'd like to get read and obviously get presented to you. But what I'm gonna ask is if, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go ahead and go right to the proclamation. So I'm gonna pull that up and read that for you, Rob, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the board for any comments that they have, so.
And Mr. Chair, Jake Ranky is displaying the proclamation, so it will be visible while you're reading it as well. It may not be lined up for you to read, but at least the public can see it.
All right. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation commending Rob Brown. Whereas after 20 years of extraordinary service spanning five terms as an elected member of the Lake County Board of Supervisors, Rob Brown is retiring from county service today, January 5th, 2021. Whereas during his time in office, Rob Brown's accomplishments were many, including instrumental roles in acquisition of Mount Conocti as a county park and establishing the Eli Stage Stop Agricultural Museum, preserving these assets for many generations to come. Whereas Rob Brown secured private funding for work and worked directly on construction of District Attorney's Octus Victim Witness Division Children's Multidisciplinary Interview Center. At the time, it was lauded as the best facility of its kind in the state of California. And whereas Rob Brown has exemplified strong leadership in his capacity as a liaison between the geothermal industry and the Cobb area community to assure funding for mitigation of impacts is appropriately used and benefits affected communities. And whereas, over the years, Rob Brown spearheaded many projects in District 5, including the Main Street Kelseyville Lighting Project, funding for the new Kelseyville Post Office, and later, conversion of the former post office site to the Kelseyville Senior Center and improvements to the Kelseyville Community Park, including the skate park. And whereas, Rob Brown stepped up as community leader in response to the recovery from the horrific Valley Fire and time and time again, in the face of subsequent wildfire events. And whereas, to mitigate the likelihood of future fires, Rob Brown championed a local benefit zone initiative to lessen fire risk in District 5's Riviera's and Buckingham Communities and brought hundreds of volunteers together to clean up fire fuels with the Thousand Hands Project. And whereas, during the unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic, Rob Brown supported local businesses struggling to survive, shutdowns, and limited reopening. He was instrumental in developing plans for distribution of more than $1 million of CARES Act funding to the Lake County businesses in need. And whereas, for all the services, all the years in service, Rob Brown brought a practical, no-nonsense approach to addressing many of the county's most important issues while maintaining a special connection and strong commitment to the needs of the constituency served. Now therefore be it proclaimed, Rob Brown is hereby recommended for his dedicated service to the people of Lake County, and we extend our colleague and friend best wishes for good health, happiness, and great success in years ahead, issued this 5th day of January 2021. And Rob, I know you've said this a bunch of times, that this virtual stuff isn't it. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to the board, but I would just like to say it's been an honor to serve with you. Coming in, I've always respected you as a man and what you've done for this county. And like I said, it's been an honor to serve with you. I know you've always had the best interests of the county at heart when you were working through everything, especially on the daisies. And I wish you a long and enjoyable retirement. So thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to serve with you. Go ahead and turn it over to the rest of the board.
I'll go ahead and get started. Rob, it's only been two years that you and I have been working together hand in hand. Though, trust me, your name is well-known in the city of Clear Lake. Your name is just, you've been around for so long, and you've done so much that it's impossible to talk about Lake County without talking about you. But the last two years have been more personal. I've gotten to foster a relationship with you, which I believe is a strong friendship, and I appreciate that. I appreciate our conversations, I appreciate your perspective, and mostly, I appreciate that we don't share the exact same perspective. And I think that's exactly what a board is all about, is to be able to come from all different directions and figure out what is best for Lake County. And I know that truly in your heart, you have always done what you felt was best for Lake County. And you and I both know, there's no guidebook, there's no directions given to any Board of Supervisors of what's right and what's wrong. And we do what we think is right. And I appreciate your perseverance in doing what you feel is right, and I appreciate your tenacity in doing what you feel is right. I've learned a lot in the last two years, and I will say that I've learned a lot from you in the last two years as well. And I hope that our friendship will continue past this moment. I'm saddened today I don't get to shake your hand as a colleague, but I know that we will continue as friends. So congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for the many years of service that you've provided to the communities that you serve.
Supervisor Brown, I'd just like to thank you for your service to our community and your leadership. I've always believed that if everybody's thinking the same thing, somebody's not thinking. And that's definitely rang true with the board that we have here, and I appreciate everything you've given to Lake County. And you will definitely be missed. Supervisor Sabatier said, you can't talk about Lake County without talking about Rob Brown. So you definitely have left a mark. And just because you're leaving this dais, I know you'll definitely continue to be a part of Lake County and having it thrive. So we thank you.
Supervisor Brown, I just have to say, even prior to my service on the Board of Supervisors or even Planning Commission, I'd come to meetings here and there. I wasn't even a leader at the tribe. However, I was respected by you. You always shook my hand and talked to me in a good way. And once we started serving together, we started realizing that the same circles we ran around in Upper Lake, a lot of the people I knew, a lot of their kids, you knew their parents, and you knew them. And it just grew a really good friendship with you. And I appreciate serving with you, your knowledge, the way you think. Sometimes in my mind, I'm like, what would Rob say? So that way I could get my mind working. And it's been an honor to watch you work and learn from your experience, from your history, from your knowledge. And I greatly appreciate that. And I hope you enjoy your retirement. It's well-deserved, and I hope you enjoy that. And I still have yet to hear you sing yet. But I heard you sing once with the Pledge Allegiance or the National Anthem over at the Veterans Deal. But yeah, one day hopefully, when this all ends, I could watch you in concert or something when you play. So take care.
Okay. All right. I think what we're gonna do is, Jessica... Can you unmute? Can we unmute Jessica? Jake?
Thank you. I have so appreciated our conversations over the years, and your perspective has always made me expand my thoughts. And I heartfully thank you for stepping up to this last term. I know you wanted to retire, and I know your family was ready to retire, but we needed you and we needed the consistency through the aftermath of the Valley Fire. So I will forever be grateful for you for stepping up for that. I, you have agreed to let me call you whenever I need a little backstory, and I promise not to wear that welcome out, but I will be seeing you at the rodeos and around. And I hope that you'll always give me space to sound ideas off you, and we can continue our relationship.
Okay, Carol?
Yes, Rob. I can't let this time get by without thanking you for your extraordinary service. And just to tell you what an incredible mentor and colleague and friend you have been to me during all these years. And the years that we worked so closely together during disaster response and recovery, those were certainly among our worst times and at the same time, our best times. Your efforts just went above and beyond, and I'm so grateful to you for all of that and for being able to work with you so closely on it. So I just wish you the very best in this next phase of your life and hope that we can keep in close contact. Best to you.
Mr. Chair, this is Anita. May I go next?
Yes, go ahead, Anita.
Thank you. Rob, for years I've called you my own personal EKG, and I've met out with kindness. You like to test boundaries, and you've made being a legal advisor very challenging, but also giving me the ability to see beyond just the matter of fact. I'm very grateful for that. I'm very grateful for all your many kindnesses, some very quiet and unassuming, which is essentially the way I see you. Thank you for everything.
Excellent. Okay, I see. What I would like to do is we move through this, because I know we have a lot of folks that are gonna be speaking here. And you know, I also know Rob's probably ready to go. So we're gonna work right through. We're gonna work right through here. I see that Senator McGuire that's here. We'll start with Senator McGuire, and then I'm gonna move to, someone's here from Thompson's office. We're gonna get them on, and then we'll go ahead and open it up to everyone else. So Senator McGuire, Jake, if we could get Senator unmuted?
And Jake, please also display what the senator is presenting.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Madam County Administrator, to the Board of Supervisors, and of course, to the esteemed Supervisor Rob Brown. It is an honor to be able to join with each of you this morning, and I wish you a Happy New Year and here's the better days ahead in 2021. Mr. Chair, it is with great honor, working with Assemblywoman Agwaird Curry, to be able to present Supervisor Brown with the highest honor of the California Legislature today for his distinguished service, not just here with the County of Lake, but of course, on the school board and throughout the county in Northern California. Supervisor Brown has dedicated tens of thousands of hours of his life to betterment to the people of Lake County. And I could go into this resolution, but I just wanna speak from the heart here for just a bit. I first really got to know Mr. Brown during the Valley Fire. It was an incredibly emotional time for this county, and it was some of the darkest days I think all of us have faced back in 2015. But there was a bright light for this county. A bright light who stepped up time and time again to be able to deliver for those who needed it most, and that was Supervisor Rob Brown. I saw firsthand the dedication, the dedication that Rob Brown had for this county. No one worked harder, both literally fighting fire to delivering for those who needed it most, whether it was assisting neighbors to be able to clear their lots of debris, to connect them with services and programs, to be able to rebuild their homes. Supervisor Brown literally went out when there was a staffing shortage in the Planning and Building Department for the County of Lake to help get folks' houses approved and allow them to be able to continue with the rebuilding process. This is who Rob Brown is. He literally dedicated thousands of lives, thousands of hours to assist neighbors. And he has been known, and this is in another fire, Rob Brown has been known to hotwire backhoes at evacuated homes to successfully build a fire break as massive flames approached. And this happened in Lower Lake. We were up on a ridge, we were with the sheriff, then Sheriff in Mendocino County, Mr. Allman as well, and we were coming down, and we got stuck behind the fire lines. And the next thing you know, Rob Brown breaks out his true MacGyver status and hotwired a backhoe, started building a fire line, and saved three homes from approaching flames. Supervisor Brown, I gotta tell you, I have such deep respect for you. And I know that we have had differences politically along the way, but I wanna let you know you are an incredible friend. I have been honored to be able to get to know you, to be able to work with you firsthand, to be able to establish that account with Redwood Credit Union and the Press Democrat to be able to deliver $3.5 million in donations after the Valley Fire. Look, this county is stronger because of you, because of your commitment to the people of Lake County. And I can't thank you enough for the time that we've had together. And I did not want to miss this morning, Rob, to be able to come, sing your praises, just to show what gratitude I have to be able to have you in my life. And I know I'm a better person for it, and I've learned what community service and public service is all about by watching you do what you do each and every day, Rob. And I just wanna say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you on behalf of Assemblywoman Agwaird Curry, and we are grateful to be able to be with you to celebrate your accomplishments and everything that you've done for this amazing county. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry that it went on for so long, but I wanted to make sure to get on here and say a few words on behalf of the one, the only, Rob Brown.
Are you gonna go ahead and, are you gonna read the proclamation or just speaking from the heart today?
I'm speaking from the heart today.
Okay.
What the resolution states is the accomplishments that Supervisor Brown has advanced in his many years in public service here in Lake County. It highlights what he has done for this county, and I know what he will continue to do. And again, this does not, we do not provide these just every week. This is the highest honor of the California Legislature, and this was adopted with a unanimous vote, Republicans and Democrats coming together to be able to celebrate Rob Brown on this very special day.
Well, thank you very much, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Love you, Rob.
All right. We're gonna go ahead, we'll go to our next, we have a video we're gonna play, a short video from Congressman Thompson's office. Could not be here today, but we're gonna go ahead. He asked if we could play this, so Jake, if we could get it set up and played?
Rob, congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. I wish I could be with you in person, but Washington DC called, and I'm here. But congratulations from Washington DC. You know, it's been both a pleasure and an honor to work with you over these years. Your lifetime residence in the county, and your love for the county, and your love for the people of Lake is very apparent. I'm impressed that you've worked so hard to serve both and that you do it with such a great attitude. I was truly impressed with your work during the Valley Fire. You really took a hands-on approach. I can remember more than on one occasion when I'd come into the county and see you directing traffic or witness you returning calls to constituents that needed help. And we all know the great work you did to make sure the Riviera was evacuated. You worked hard on the recovery efforts, and you worked hard to set up the Benefit Zone Initiative to help reduce future fire risks. You took it to a new level when you bought a D6 and donated your time to use it to help fight the last fires that we had in the county. I've seen you work everything, from your dedication to the wrestling team at the Kelseyville High School, to building the wrestling team practice facility, making sure that Kids, the Kids Interview Center at the DA's office became a reality. You're leading the acquisition of the Mount Conocti Park to make sure it's the beautiful county park that we have today, and your efforts to help establish the Eli Stage Stop Museum. Rob, everyone recognizes you as a compassionate community member and a great family man. And we all love your sense of humor, sometimes. And all of these things were in large part why I worked so hard to convince you into running for this last term. I'm glad you did. The county needed you at the time, and you rose to the challenge. Rob, thanks for all that you've done, and thanks for being a great friend.
So, Mr. Chair, we're really grateful to Congressman Thompson making that video available, even though he is tied up. And we also have a proclamation that he has sent to Supervisor Brown that Jake Ranky is displaying. So Jake, can you do a screen share and make that bigger for just a moment? Okay, so, Mr. Chair, maybe there's a technical problem. Feel free to move on. Oh, Jake, are you ready?
Yeah, I know we got, like I said, I know we got a lot of folks who are gonna get through. I'm gonna go ahead, and I see Sheriff Martin. I know Sheriff Martin would like to make some calls. would like to make some comments here. So Jake, can we make sure that Sheriff Martin could get unmuted?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here, one second.
Excellent.
Sheriff Martin also has a framed proclamation for Supervisor Brown that hopefully Jake can share while he's speaking.
Good morning. Yes, just a plaque. It's a, it's a very token symbol of our gratitude to Rob Brown from the sheriff's office. And I want to talk a little bit. I'll try to make mine as brief as possible. But my working relationship, personal and professional, with Rob goes well before I became the sheriff, all the way to the first time that I met him. He set the, he showed me who he was. And from the day that I met him, I knew he was a strong leader, not, not just in this community, but with, with whoever he contacted. Rob's the type of person that says what needs to be said, when it needs to be said, even if it's going to make somebody uncomfortable. He's the person that sets an example. You'll hear everybody on this conversation talking about what hard work he does for this community. And I, I'm here to attest to that. You, you set the bar very high for anybody who wants to hold office, particularly in Lake County. I want to thank you for your, your friendship, your guidance, both personal and professional. And I won't take up any more time. A lot of people got a lot of great things to say about you. And I want you to know that both personally and on behalf of the sheriff's office, thank you for all you've done for this community over the last 20 years and at a lifetime. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and go to our auditor, Kathy. Jake, can we make sure that Kathy can get unmuted?
Good morning. Hi. Hopefully you can hear me now.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Awesome. Wonderful. So, Rob, you've never missed an opportunity to tell people that you and I were classmates at Kelseyville High School. And I recall a gathering in my home to plan one of our class reunions. And you were telling us all that you were going to run for county supervisor, and that you, there were so many things you could fix and make better for Lake County. I had to chuckle, thinking that although I had no doubt you would be a fantastic advocate for our community and for county government, your quick wit and not-so-common common sense might not give you every tool you would need to handle being in the public eye 24/7. Well, you certainly proven that you're a perfect blend of what is needed to be an outstanding supervisor. You've been able to handle everything that's needed of a county supervisor and so much more. You've been able to balance your unwavering commitment to family and friends, and your multiple business ventures, and you've been a constant for those of us that have been lucky enough to work with you closely on county issues. Your intellect and great sense approach to finding solutions to even the most difficult topic has been evident in everything you have taken on, from the small issues to the big issues, through economic upturns and downturns, through disaster after disaster, and now during a more difficult time for our community and our local government than even you and I could have imagined in sitting in my living room decades ago. Through it all, Rob, you've remained steadfast in your dedication to community. You've maintained your sense of humor that some of us love to hate and hate to love, depending on your point of reference. And most importantly to me, and against the odds of our often polar opposite viewpoints, you've remained one of my most cherished friends. Thank you, Rob, for what you've done for our community, and thank you for your friendship throughout the years. I wish you nothing but good health and happiness as you move on to other things that you will undoubtedly fix and make better. And hopefully, to close this out, my husband won't have the opportunity to get into one of these Zoom messages to discuss something about a drive to Stony Ford Rodeo in a Conal line van. So if you hear from him soon, I do apologize in advance. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and I know there's a lot of folks who still want to, you know, make some comments here. I'm going to go ahead and start with, with Ed Robey, our former District One Supervisor. I see Ed is on. Jake, can we make sure Ed's microphone isn't? Can you give us a sound check, Ed?
I'm here.
Okay.
Don't see a picture.
We can hear your voice, but we can't see you.
Jake, can you get the camera working, if you could?
Uh, yeah. So I had to turn it off earlier. You should be able to turn it on now.
Okay. There you go, Ed.
Great, thank you. Listen, I, I know there's a lot of people that want to speak, so I'm not going to make a speech. I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said other than to say it's all true and a thousand times more. I just basically want to say, hey, Rob, listen, of all the other people that I've served with, you were the hardest working, most dedicated, and the thing that really impressed me was the way you grew into the job. And you did great. Anyway, I'm proud of you. I'm glad we had a chance to get to know each other, and I wish you nothing but the best. That's it for me.
All right, Ed, thank you very much. Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and we're going to open it up for, with just Jake, you know, if you, if you got a comment, if you'd like to make a comment, if you can raise your hand, please do so.
I did see Melissa Fulton here, turned the video on and raised her hand. So I've sent her a mute request.
Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
Yes, good morning, Supervisors, and good morning, Rob Brown, a good friend for many, many years. And so much has been said about you, for you this morning, which I echo, and especially the fact that even through all the times that we butted heads, we have always remained friends. I treasure that friendship. You have done so much for this county. It would be impossible to list everything, and the value that you have given to every resident of this county, regardless of the district they live in, cannot be overstated. So thank you for your service, for your commitment, and I wish you the very best and very good health for years to come. Thank you.
Hey, like I said, do we have any more folks at this point? I don't see any hands up. Do we have anyone else in the virtual room that would like to, to make a comment at this point? Please raise your hand if you can. You got a comment, Supervisor Brown? We'll go ahead and let you go.
Yeah, I almost forgot. Three very important people. This, it was hard to, to list everybody, but there's been three additions since I started this venture 20 years ago. And that's my son-in-law, Rick, and my daughters-in-law, Nicole and Amanda. And I want to thank them for enduring this with, with this crazy family bar. So I didn't want to leave without including them in my, in my list of people I owe gratitude to as well.
All right, thanks, Supervisor Brown. Go ahead. Thank you. Scott, go ahead. Scott DeLeon has his hand up. So Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, good morning. I'll be real quick. Rob, I just, on behalf of the entire third floor, CDD, Water Resources, and the Public Works Department, I just want to thank you for just being an unbelievable supervisor, a tremendous supporter of everything that we try to do up here. And I too value your friendship very much and, and totally respect everything that you've done for the citizens and, and the employees and, and everybody that, that you have served. And I just want to thank you for everything that you did.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and ask one more time. Anybody who'd like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand in the virtual room. Maria, Maria Valdez. Jake, can we make sure Maria's, there you go, Maria.
Hi, Rob. I want to thank you as a, not only as our supervisor and colleague, but also as a friend. Thank you for being a supporter of myself and our department and always rooting for us. I really, I'm going to hold on to our friendship forever, and I hope we continue friendship even after this. So thank you. Thank you to your family, and congratulations.
Thank you, Maria.
Okay, next we'll have Lars, Lars Ewen. Go ahead, Lars.
There we go. Rob, not to rehash everything here, but I think there's a couple of points that were said. I, it was great to hear all the parks comments in the, in the commendations. And, you know, absolutely, those are, those are magnificent achievements, the Mount Conocti Park and the Kelseyville Community Park. But I think a part that was, that I wanted to emphasize is your support of field staff. My time at Public Works, my time at Public Services here, it's, it's evident that, you know, that those guys, you recognize the, you know, call them what you want, frontline staff, you know, field staff, but I mean, those guys, boots on the ground. And, and I think you, you know, more than any other, anyone else that I've, I've worked with, you recognize that, you support it, and it's, it's noticed. So we will miss that. Hopefully it, you know, continues and just, you know, wish you well. And I, you know, people talk about the friendships. I'll, I'll say more like an uncle or a grandfather, but.
Crazy uncle.
So just, just best wishes, and you'll be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Lars.
Okay, like I said, I know a lot of folks want to speak. I don't see any hands up at this point in the virtual room, but I do know that we have some folks inside the chambers. And I can't see in the chambers there, Supervisor Sabatier, so if you could help me out with anybody in chambers, greatly appreciate it.
Is there anybody that wishes to make a comment?
This will kind of be the, you know, we're going to go ahead and close the virtual room. Rob, I know a lot of accolades, and they're all well deserved. I know you've been standing there on your porch for a while and everything. I know we're probably going to end up here pretty soon, but I would just like to give you one opportunity to, to, you know, if you have any final comments or, or anything to that, to that.
I just can't thank everybody enough. There's the kind words, and I just appreciate it. And I'm ready to let you guys get, get to work, and you got a lot of stuff to do today. And let Jessica get going. She's got, she's got a lot of energy. She's got to bust loose here.
Well, Rob, once again, you know, it's, it's an honor. So.
We do have a few people here in the boardroom.
All right. Okay, Supervisor Sabatier, you know, like I said, I can't see in the room there. So if you can kind of control it, and I know we have one last presentation that we'll do at the end, but we're going to go ahead. And if you could work through that list of folks there, that'd be great.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Please give us your name.
Jeanianich, and I'm representing the Twin Lakes community.
And at this moment, this is on the agenda item about Rob Brown leaving his position as a supervisor. We'll get to normal public comment.
Okay.
Later on. So if it's about Rob Brown, then you can keep going.
If it's not about Rob Brown?
Then we'll call you back up when it's time.
Okay, thank you.
We have another comment.
I thought I was going to get nice things from Twin Lakes. I didn't know.
It's going to be the last ask before you leave.
Yeah.
Rob Brown, it was a pleasure working with you for five years doing cannabis, and I, I really thank you for your service and your stewardship.
We weren't doing cannabis, just to be clear.
And I loved your sense of humor as well. Thank you again.
Thank you, Lars.
Is there any other public comment on this agenda item? Does not appear to be anymore. I, I do, if, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I just want to say one last final word to Rob. Rob, you, I'm not going to get specific, but at one point you and I had a conversation, and you told me of certain expectations you have of me as a supervisor, and I will not forget those expectations, and I will do my best to meet those expectations. Thank you for, again, your, your guidance and your leadership and your friendship. Appreciate it.
Bruno, you've already met those expectations. You're a good man. Okay, thank you all.
Yep, thank you, Rob. I know we have one last presentation, but I think you can drop off. Go ahead and go.
Enjoy that.
I'm sorry, if I, if I may, real quick?
Oh, yep.
This is Jake. I've been, someone asked me to speak on their behalf. Katie Galvini sent me a message, and she would like to say that she personally and professionally, she sincerely appreciates Rob Brown for everything he has done for her hometown in District Five, and professionally always supporting her, pushing her and believing in her. She would also never forget, you would never be forgotten by her, and she can't wait to see what you do next. She also said that you know how much she loves public speaking. And I would also like to say, Rob Brown, I first heard of you from my, from my buddy who was a biker, and you were helping him set up the bike park out in Kelseyville. And that was, that was my first, that was the first time I really heard about you. And I guess I was, I was impressed from the start. And starting with the county and working with you as on the board, you, you always did it. And, you know, you, you impressed me through and through, and I always, I appreciated you. And thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Jake. Thank you, Katie.
All right, Supervisor Brown.
There's, there's one more hand up right now.
In, in the boardroom?
In the Zoom room. There's Brenna Sullivan with her hand up.
Oh, okay. Brenna, go ahead.
Brenna Sullivan, Lake County Farm Bureau. Rob, I just wanted to say, on behalf of the current Board of Directors and previous iterations, the farmers, ranchers, truckers, processors, and farm employees have really appreciated your service as District Five Supervisor. In my five years with the Farm Bureau, I really appreciated your candor and integrity as we've worked through a number of issues. And personally, I really appreciated your dedication and service of my hometown of Kelseyville and the community that I love. I just wanted to wish you a happy retirement, and I'll see you around.
Thank you, Brenna.
Okay, all right, we are going to, Rob, we're going to try and close this one out. I know we have a presentation, but I know you're going to drop off and get that taken care of. So take care of yourself. Angela, take care. Wish you guys all happiness in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I know we have one last presentation. And I think we're going to get it keyed up here so we can play it. It's a video on.
Jake, if you can play the video that was requested.
Uh, yes, this is, yes, I have it right here.
And so, Mr. Chair, just to frame this, this is a comment that Joan Moss wished to be played.
Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Whee! When all is said and done, will you joke and have some fun? You did run and hide from me, Richard Durham's papers flee. From the truth is such a mess, code enforcement second guess. Have you hidden all your grass? Will marijuana save your ass? Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Stevie, 413-596, Sanders versus Brown. Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? You hit him two times in the ribs and one time in the head. You even hit the dog, and now the dog is dead. Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Whee! Bob Sanders is his name. He will never be the same. You have broken family ties with your phone calls in your eyes. Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? The transcript points the way. Is it true what people say? Ellen Keighley Dennis too, the guns really work for you. the guns really work for you. Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? You hide behind your skirts and pretend that nothing's wrong. The drugs did not decide, and the song goes on and on. Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Whee! You started chipping wood, I did not think you should. Your woodpile caught on fire, your insanity for hire. Rob Brown, Rob Brown, will you ride your horse to town? Rob Brown.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we're gonna go ahead and return to our agenda here. I know we got, like Rob said, we got a lot of stuff to do today, and some changes that will be happening. So, we're gonna go back to our number four item, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. I don't, didn't see any today, but I'm just checking. Do we have any?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And now we'll move to number five, approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are usually non-controversial, could be pushed through by both of the board. And are there any items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, I would like to pull two items. One is item 5.3. It's for clarification purposes. There were some numbers that were juxtaposed. And then I also would like to pull item 5.13.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, would you like to seat Supervisor-elect Pyska so she can vote on the consent agenda?
Okay, yeah, I thought we were gonna go back to, you know what, I might have jumped the gun then. I apologize. So... All right, then we will, we're gonna go ahead and leave that item. I apologize for that. I should've went right into the item 6.2. That would be the item we go to. Item 6.2, our 9:15 a.m. item, and administer the oath of office to District One, Four, and Five Supervisors. And I believe Maria Valdez is here. Thank you for keeping me on track, Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning, Maria.
So I'll have the three of you raise your right hand, and then I'll have you repeat after me, and I'll ask you to state your name. I, please state your name by district.
Oak Simon.
Tina Scott.
Jessica Pyska.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies
Against all enemies.
enemies.
foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Okay, and Carol, like I said, once again, thanks for keeping me on track there. After all that, I did get off track. Will we do the election and then go to consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you would conduct the election, then the chair you elect will go back to the consent agenda and take it from there.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to item 6.3, our 9:16 a.m. item. The 9:16 a.m. item is election of Chair of the Board of Supervisors and the Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors for 2021. And so, we're gonna go ahead and look for nominations for Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Supervisor Sabatier as Chair and Supervisor Crandall as Vice Chair.
There's a motion and a second.
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Johanna?
Okay, um, sorry, I gotta get my order straight. Supervisor Sabatier?
I appreciate the vote. Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and thank you.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
and Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I will, congratulations Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Crandall. So I'm gonna go ahead. Would we like to take a five-minute break, or just continue on? Well, it's up to the new chair, I guess.
And I'd say, since it's only 10 o'clock and we're only an hour in, and there's not a massive celebration as we usually have when we have a change of new sworn-in officers here in the board of chambers, that we go ahead and go on and maybe take a break around 11 a.m.? Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, and we're changing the name tags. We have Supervisor Pyska's name up on the dais as well now, to make sure that she has her position here. And I'm sure we'll still be moving things around possibly a little bit later on. Before we move on, I do want to thank Chair Simon, or Supervisor Simon now, for your leadership in the past year. Probably one of the most unexpected and difficult years to ever come. And just want to thank you for everything that you've done. You've been consistent, and you've been persistent throughout. And I think that's, that's what we needed, and that's what we still need. So I appreciate your leadership and appreciate your example.
If I could just make one comment, I would just like to thank the entire board. Supervisor Brown just retired, but for all the support throughout this year. As you said, it was very challenging. But I also wanted to, you know, really thank all of the staff. It was, you know, an unprecedented pandemic. We're still going through it. But I just want to thank all of the staff for everything that they've done, from admin to all of our supervisors to all of our frontline workers, working through these challenging times. I just want to thank you for all the support. We did get a lot done, even though we had some contested meetings. But I just want to thank everybody. So thank you very much, and let's look forward to a better 2021. So thank you.
If there's any further comments from the board, we'll go ahead and move on in the agenda. Okay, so we were talking about the consent agenda on item number five. We had pulled 5.3 and 5.13, if I'm correct on those numbers.
Excuse me. Mr. Chair, are you going to go on to Vice Chair?
Oh, I thought we had done both all at the same time.
Yeah, I apologize. The motion was for Chair and Vice Chair. I should've asked if it needed to be a separate motion.
No, I guess I just didn't hear the sound. So you nominated, so the motion was Chair and Vice Chair together.
Yes.
Yes.
Then you're fine. I'm sorry.
Okay.
However, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure you took public comment on that, did you?
No, I did not.
Well, we're back.
So I think, I think the outgoing chair should take public comment on that, if there is any.
Okay, all right. I will, Supervisor Sabatier, I will step back in for just this public comment. I will go ahead and open it up to public comments at this point. Thank you, Carol. So Jake, if you could open the room, greatly appreciate it.
All right, will do. I've sent a Zoom, a unmute request out to the Zoom floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
If you'd like to make a comment, this would be the time to do it. Okay Jake, sounds like we have none, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to board chambers. Do we have any public comment, board chambers?
On this item?
On this item.
We'll let you know when your item comes up.
So no public comment in the chamber at this moment in time?
Okay, then we're gonna go and close public comment, and we'll turn the meeting over to you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Sorry for moving too fast. That's, thank you to staff for keeping us in check. So moving on back to the approval of the consent agenda, again, just to re-summarize, we pulled item 5.3 and 5.13. Just gonna ask one more time, any other items that need to be pulled from the board?
No.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, it's my understanding that five, the first of the two items you pulled will be taken up today, and, which is 5.3, and 5.13 will be continued to a future agenda.
Yes, it was missing some documents to be able to support the request.
Thank you.
Okay, and then let's go ahead and check in the Zoom room if there is anybody that wishes to pull an item. Just going back over that again, just to make sure. Jake, if we can unmute and see if anybody wishes to pull an item?
Yes, I will. I have sent an unmute request out to the Zoom floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Anybody here in the board chambers wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. And we'll go ahead and get to item 5.3 later on. Let's go ahead and try to catch up on our timed items. So we'll go ahead and skip back to item 6.4.
Do I need to approve the agenda, or the consent agenda?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda 5.1 through 5.2, and 5.4 through 5.12.
Second.
And I will second.
Oh, sorry.
So I have a motion and a second, which came first from Supervisor Crandall. Joanna, if we can have a roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
and Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye. Thank you very much. So moving on to item, I believe we are on 6.4, our 9:17 a.m. item, sitting as the Lake County Board of Equalization, election of Chair and Vice Chair of the Lake County Local Board of Equalization for 2021. And looking for a nomination.
Typically, Mr. Chair, your board has the same officers for this as you do for the Board of Supervisors.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Supervisor Sabatier as Chair and Supervisor Crandall as Vice Chair.
And I will second.
A motion and a second. Joanna, roll call, please.
Do public comment.
Supervisor Simon.
Sorry, sorry, I'm skipping public comment on these. I need to open it up for public. Anybody in the Zoom room wish to have a comment on this, or questions?
I have sent out an unmute request. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Anybody in the boardroom have any comments on this item? And seeing none, we had a motion and a second already. And Joanna, if we can have a roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
and Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on to item 6.5, our 9:18 a.m. item, sitting as the Lake County In-Home Supporting, Supportive Services, election of Chair and Vice Chair of the Lake County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority Board of Directors for 2021. Any conversation at the board level, before I open it up for public?
No conversation.
And anybody from the public have any comment? Jake, if we can check the Zoom room?
All right. I have sent an unmute request out to the Zoom floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
And hearing none, check in the boardroom here. Anybody have a comment on item 6.5? Okay, and bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Supervisor Sabatier as Chair and Supervisor Crandall as Vice Chair.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Joanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
and Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on to item 6.6, our 9:19 a.m. item, appoint/reappoint members of the Lake County Planning Commission for a two-year term. A, reappoint District One Commissioner John H. Hess III. B, reappoint District Two Commissioner Everardo Chavez-Perez. C, reappoint District Three Commissioner Batzulwin A. Brown. D, reappoint District Four Commissioner Christina Price. And E, appoint District Five Commissioner Lance Williams. Do we take each one at a time and do a motion, or could we do all of them at once? And since one of them is an appointment rather than a reappointment, what's our process?
Mr. Chair, I think you can do all of the reappointments at once, and then do the appointments separately. The only issue with doing several together is if the matter would ever be reconsidered, they would all have to come back. But since they're reappointments, that seems unlikely here. But you can do those three in one motion, or those four rather.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board?
No.
Okay, and then let's go ahead and open up to the public. We'll start with the boardroom. Any comments or questions from the public on this item? Okay, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room and see if there's any comments or questions from the public there.
All right, I have sent an unmute request out to the Zoom floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
All right, thank you Jake. And let's go ahead and bring it back, and let's go ahead and take action on the reappointments.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint/reappoint the members of the Lake County Planning Commission for the two-year term. District One, John Hess. District Two, Everardo Chavez-Perez. District Three, Batzulwin A. Brown. And District Four, Christina Price.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Joanna, if we can get a roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
and Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then looking for the last one, the appointment of District Five Commissioner.
I move to appoint Lance Williams as the District Five Planning Commissioner.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Joanna, roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
and Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye, thank you very much, and congratulations to all planning commissioners.
Welcome aboard Lance.
Welcome Lance. And I don't know if you all got to see him when he stood and did his public comment, but he's looking really nice today and prepared for the job. Not that you've never looked nice before, but now we're gonna move on to item 6.7, our 9:30 a.m. item, public input. This is for any items that are not on our agenda and are related to the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. And we do have a public comment here in our boardroom, and we'll start here.
Good morning. My name is Jeanne Anich.
Anna, hello everybody. I'm representing the Twin Lakes community with the need for a turn lane, or pocket lane into our neighborhood. Since August 30th, we've had five collisions, three have been fatalities, one has been a major injury. We feel that we really need a turn lane into our community. We work in Sonoma County, and most of these accidents are occurring between 5 and 6 o'clock in the evening, when everybody's coming home from work, and everybody's tired. And I personally feel like I'm playing Russian roulette, turning into our neighborhood just to come home. I have to put my blinker on like a mile before I turn, and hope and pray that nobody's gonna rear-end me. We need your guidance, your support, and your help as to how we can get this done. Does anybody have any suggestions or recommendations for us?
Nope. Mr. Chair, I know we're not supposed to respond to public comment, but that is in my district, I will let you know, I'm available, send me an email or give me a call, but I will let you know, as of the last two accidents, they have been reported to Caltrans, and at our last South Deal Committee meeting, I made it very apparent that that's what we would like to have for our community. So, I begin the conversations with Caltrans, and if you would get my number from the office there while you're there, there should be a card in the main office, you can give me a call, and I will continue to keep you updated as we work on that project.
And if I email you, will you return my email?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you Mr. Simon.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions that you have for me?
In public comment, we can't go back and forth?
Can I give you at least the petitions that I've, we've got 181 signatures. The last accident occurred on the 17th of December. We started an online petition on December 19th. We've gotten 181 signatures. When we went to retrieve the signatures, the forum that we used for the online petition didn't print out the last name and the address, forgive me for that, we're trying to retrieve that, but we just feel that the need is real for this link.
And I would suggest that the official way would be to drop it off in the administrative office, so it can be stamped and recorded that it's been received.
Is that here in the building?
It's just to the left and across the hall.
And should I leave like three copies or five copies?
They'll let you know what the correct process would be.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comments from the boardroom? Okay, Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room, and see if we have any public comments, again, not related to any agenda item on our agenda currently.
Alright, I've sent an unmute request out to the Zoom floor, if you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and move on to item 6.8, our 9:35 a.m. item. Presentation of proclamation designated in the month of January 2021 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Lake County, and I believe that Supervisor Scott will be reading the proclamation.
Yes. Good morning, proclamation designating the month of January 2021 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas, human trafficking is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, and gender, and whereas, human trafficking is a borderless crime against individuals that violates the most basic human rights, and deprives victims of human dignity, and denies freedom to 32 million people around the world. And whereas, human trafficking is the fastest-growing criminal industry globally, and whereas, California ranks third amongst the must-states in the number of potential reports of human trafficking. And whereas, a serious form of human trafficking involves the exploitation of children and youth for commercial sex acts. It is imperative that our young people and their families learn how to recognize risks, and resist predators who use coercion and threats to manipulate children and young adults into sex and labor trafficking. And whereas, the Lake Family Resource Center has instrumental in leading the way in the county of Lake in addressing human trafficking by providing 24-hour hotline services, and continuing support advocating to survivors. And whereas, preventing human trafficking in Lake County must include active public and private efforts to help recognize and acknowledge the existence. And it's time for all of us to start the conversation, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all residents. And whereas, organizations such as a District Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Lakeport Police Department, Clear Lake Police Department, and Lake Family Resource Center are committed to ending human trafficking in Lake County, and provide essential crisis intervention and prevention services for all members of our community. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the month of January 2021 is designated as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Lake County, and our community is urged to support the efforts of the agency assisting victims of human trafficking, and urges all local government schools, businesses, and community members to be aware and report any suspicious activity in local police departments, and help shine the light on trafficking. Passed and adopted this 5th day of January 2021. And I think that the last part is, that states that members need to be aware of it. There is a lot of training available out there, in fact, I'm taking a training right now through Mendocino County of just what to look for, and I think that's really the biggest thing, I think, for many of us, this is a hard thing to talk about, and we all feel it's not happening, can't be happening in our community, well, it is happening in our community, and we have had arrests, and it's gonna be up to you and I to recognize the signs and be aware, so we can protect our children, and to educate our children, so they aren't manipulated into this. It's so easily done, I've heard survivors speak on how they thought, they didn't think that they were being trafficked, they thought it was their boyfriend, and that he loved him. And I think we all need to be aware if we want to stop this horrible crime from happening.
And absolutely a horrible crime, and just to add to that real quick, that the signs are there, it's whether or not we're willing to acknowledge that we see them. I happen to go to our community college here with, who I saw as a friend, we were both on our, the student body government group, we had classes together, we studied together. He is now under arrest for that activity, and when I look back, I should have seen some of those signs, and I was very ignorant to it, and I look back at those times as I needed to pay more attention. And so sometimes, though, we think it's not happening, but it's actually happening right under our nose, and it's a very sad situation. Is there anybody from Lake Family Resource Center, or the Seroptimist Group, other than Tina? Supervisor Scott, who is here to speak on this? Okay, any other comment from the board members before we move on? Okay, and for this one, I will move on without public comment, if that's okay with everybody. Moving on to our
Uh, Secretary Chair?
Yes?
Any item on the agenda is subject to public comment, action, or no?
Okay, any public comment on this item? Zoom room?
I will, I've sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room, if you'd like to make a comment, please unmute, state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none, let's open it up for the board chambers, I believe I did see a hand for this item? Maybe I didn't see a hand, now I see a hand, if you want to make a comment, go ahead and step to the microphone.
John Moss, I witnessed a possible proposition by an older man to a younger girl, and I spoke with the District Attorney about it at the time, and I have very strong feelings about human trafficking. And he said something that I'm always aware of from now on, and that is, did you get the man's license plate? So, when we're shopping, and when we leave a store, or we go into a store, and we see something that, I wanted to punch his lights out, but I didn't, we need to think of getting the license plate number of the perp, the perpetrator, and then report it to the Sheriff's Department, thank you. I just wanted to add that Tina, because I think your proclamation was very good. But I want to say that I believe and I saw that it is happening here, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you Ms. Grant for keeping me correct. Moving on to our item 6.9, 9:45 a.m. item, consideration of formation of the Lake County Agricultural Advisory Committee, and I believe this was submitted by Supervisor Pyska.
Yes, thank you so much. This idea came up in conversation over the past couple months, and was really brought to my attention by Sharon Zoller of the California Women in Ag, and I took the ag venture class last year, and I am a member of the California Women in Agriculture, and I've learned so much over the past year and a half, and when she brought up the idea of having an advisory committee where we could really proactively work to support and protect the vitality and the economic benefits, and the legacy of our agriculture industry in the county, I thought it was a great idea. So, how I envision this committee working is to address the concerns and the issues within the ag community and industry before they become a problem. The committee would have open meetings, I believe that it should have a seven-board member, with two of them being the supervisors from District 4 and District 5, which have the largest areas of prime ag, and then, five members of the ag community, but diverse, so three representing different crops, and I would like one of them to be cannabis, an additional member representing organic growers, and then, the last being a member of the processing field, like the pear sheds. So, aside from the cannabis member, if all of those members could have a diverse background, so that we could have walnuts, pears, wine grapes, all represented on that committee, I think that would be the best way to move forward. And a two-year term for committee members. The first meeting would be to clearly lay out the focus based on whatever it is we decide would be the purpose and intent of the committee today. But I would like it to advise the Board of Supervisors on data, on agriculture issues and operations, land and water use guidance, collaborate on addressing industry concerns such as farm labor, COVID was a big deal this last year within our ag committee, and within our ag community, and I don't foresee that going away, so, you know, looking at best practices from this last year, and how do we move forward through COVID, marketing of agriculture products, support the updating of the general plan under the ag resources, this committee could be really invaluable with that. So, I've spoken with the ag commissioner about this. He would be a participant in the meetings, but not a member of the committee, and this would not be the forum where the ag commissioner's role, where they are regulating federally and state responsibilities, wouldn't be questioned or into call, it would be more about collaborating and moving forward the moving forward with the betterment of our agriculture industry and community. So I wanted to bring that to you, and see what all of you thought.
Okay, thank you very much, any comments or questions on this item?
I would just like to thank Supervisor Pyska for bringing this to our attention, I would definitely love to sit on this committee, I also have taken the ag venture, and a member of the Women of Agriculture, and I do feel sometimes that this community does not have the voice needed here at the Board of Supervisors, so I would definitely agree to this committee, and love to sit on it with you.
Anyone else?
Thank you for bringing this forward Supervisor Pyska. Just, this is, these are gonna be public meetings, so I take it that like the tribal entities that live in the vicinity will be able to attend these as well, and so I just encourage those tribes that are in that local area to be able to attend that, or to attend that, so, thank you again.
So, how I envision this is that the meetings would be seasonally, four times a year, unless that's too much, or based on need, but it would work similar to how the Risk Reduction Authorities have been run, where we have the committee members, but it's also open to the public, and the public participates in those meetings, and brings invaluable information and conversation forward. So, it would be a really interactive collaborative forum.
Excellent.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
This is Sharon Zoller.
Hold on one second, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public first, opening up to the board members. So I do have a question for you, what is the interaction between this group and the Farm Bureau? And what kind of, since this would be an open to the public, I take it this would follow the Brown Act and things like that, what's the, who have you spoken to as far as staff to be able to coordinate those things?
Well, it would be open to the public, and it would follow the Brown Act. The Farm Bureau, I would hope, would come and be a participant. I have spoken with Brenna Sullivan about this, and she is very much in favor. So, I don't think that we should appoint someone to the committee from the Farm Bureau, but if they also happen to be a member of the Farm Bureau, you know, that's perfectly wonderful. But this is a way to really engage everybody in the ag community, especially on tribal lands, so if anybody is interested, they're welcome at the meeting to participate.
Okay, and I see a similarity to the kind of group that I put together to bring back the creation of the Prime Farmland Protection Zone, things like that, where those discussions were not happening, and we needed to figure out a way to find how cannabis and traditional ag were interfacing together, and I see that group as being possible, a possible place where those discussions can be had. So I see similarities that there was a need, and that possibly means that there's a future need to continue those types of conversations as well. So I appreciate the idea, and I appreciate you bringing that to us. Any other questions or comments before I open it up for the public? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead, and I do have a hand raised here in the boardroom, so let's start here in the boardroom, go ahead and step up to the microphone, yes?
I think this is a great idea. I support it, I'd like to make sure that the meetings will be public, and I also need to request that Steve Hagic be involved in this advisory committee. I watched him conduct the, one of his subcommittees last year, I thought he did a great job, and he is the Agricultural Commissioner. Okay, that's my only comment, that I hope the meetings will be public, and that Steve Hagic be involved as an advisor, or a, you know, one of the department heads who might be attending this meeting, since he's the Agricultural Commissioner.
Thank you very much, and had I put on my glasses earlier, I would have noticed that Commissioner Hagic is in the back. the back. You were blurry blue without my glasses. I apologize.
I just wanted to make some comments very similar to what Jessica Pyska said. There needs to be, the intent, purpose, and scope need to be as precise as possible. The topics, as she discussed, should be in general, farm labor issues, water concerns, marketing of ag products, I agree with that. I agree with terms being limited, so there isn't a, so that they change people every couple of years. There shouldn't be any discussions concerning any actions taken by my department. These are generally confidential and bound by legal parameters enforced by our state and federal partners. I'm also concerned that the, that the group doesn't make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors in how state, federal, and county programs are administered, because there are legal guidelines and parameters that we have to deal with, with the federal state partners. And lastly, as was discussed before, four meetings is fine to start with, but if there's not a need to have four meetings, I think fewer meetings, in my world, are the best, because if you have a meeting that has no purpose, then you could find solutions for problems that don't exist. So.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Anyone else from the chambers wish to make a public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room, and it looks like Ms. Sullivan is ready to speak already.
Thank you. Brenna Sullivan from the Lake County Farm Bureau. First, I want to thank Sharon Zoller for bringing this idea forward to Supervisor Pyska and to Supervisor Pyska for championing it and bringing it to the board. I do agree with it being a committee primarily composed of boots-on-the-ground farmers. But given that, I would suggest that this group meet on an as-needed basis, given that, you know, the type of committee members you're going to want are going to be busy, especially during certain times of the year. And you really want to gather a group of people that, you know, are very invested in the Lake County ag community, that are industry leaders. And so having the meetings on an as-needed basis will certainly kind of draw those people in and be respectful of time efficiencies. I do agree, I would like to see the committee members represent all of our major crops and also have experience in diversity in multiple aspects of the ag industry. So having committee members that are not only growers, but they also deal with labor issues and that sort of thing. And they also need to be collaborative and open-minded, because we're going to need to tackle a number of tough issues in the coming years, having to do with different regulations coming down from the state, different land use issues. And so we do need some collaborative, collaborative members on the committee. I do have some suggestions for potential committee members, if it would be appropriate to share them now. If not, I can speak with Supervisor Pyska and give those at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the Zoom room? I know Sharon was trying to speak earlier. Hopefully, she's still here.
I don't see a Sharon in the room. I will, but I can send out a mute request to the Zoom floor, if you'd like to proceed with that.
Please, thank you.
Yes. I have sent a mute request out to the Zoom floor, if you would like to make a comment, please unmute and say your first and last name.
This is Sharon Zoller. I think I register as iPhone. So I appreciate Jessica bringing this forward, and I think the speakers that have preceded me have encapsulated the conversations that Jessica and I have had. It's just very important, you know, to keep the preservation and the economic vibrancy of the Lake County agriculture. It's a huge part of the whole community, not just the farmers on the tractors, but a large impact in the whole county. And I do echo Mr. Hagic's concerns. This is, my vision is certainly not a committee that fields complaints or addresses those kinds of questions. There are certainly already avenues and processes in place to field those. So I believe, meeting on a as-needed basis, and I certainly don't agree that we don't need just to have a meeting because it's on the calendar. It needs to be purposeful and task-driven. So I'm excited for this coming forward, and I welcome the opportunity to work with Jessica to bring this to life. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the Zoom room? And are we still open right now, Jake?
That's, a mute request is still out there, yes.
Okay. So hearing none, let's bring it back to the board.
Hi, Jake. This is coming forward, and
Nope, that doesn't sound like
I'm sorry, I think I heard Danny.
Yes, yes, I have a question about the
Yes.
About the selection for the committees.
Please provide your name and ask your question.
So I was wondering how these committees are going to be selected and if there's a certain number of committee members that are going to be selected, because we do have a number of people who are actually coming up from the Bay Area that want to bring agriculture that might not be in the area yet. But we do need some diversity, I think, as far as people's expertise in growing different crops. We have a variety of Middle Eastern people. We have some African Americans who are in agriculture, and we want to make sure that we have diversity in the board members as well as the, as well as the crops themselves.
Okay, and your name, again?
Oh, this is Danny, Danny Premis.
Perfect, thank you very much. Any other public comment, and then maybe come back to the board and respond to that question?
I think we do have one more comment on the Zoom floor.
Okay, let's go ahead and finish up with the Zoom floor before we come back to the board chambers, where there is another public comment.
I have a comment from Erin. Looks like you are un-muteing. If I could, will you please confirm your first and last name? Not hearing anything from you there, Erin. If you're trying to speak, you might be having some technical difficulties with your audio. If you have a hardware mute, please check for that. Maybe a mute on your microphone or something like that. They just sent me a message via chat saying that they support this measure and the inclusion of cannabis and thanked us.
Okay, thank you very much for passing that on. We'll go ahead and open it back up here in the board chambers. Public comment, please give us your name.
Lance Williams. I just wanted to say that I think that this is a good step. This would be the last thing I think I would really be commenting on. But I also was texted by about three people that had had problems today getting in through the Zoom to speak, and I was wondering if also to put out there that ecomments, I think there might be some ecomments that could be read as well. I do not have anything in front of me right now, but those were a couple of things I just wanted just to kind of relay to everyone. So thank you again for putting this forward, Jessica, and take care.
And not sure if, Jake, I don't know if you've heard or seen any of these problems that might be occurring, or if anybody's just maybe waiting in the waiting room, but I have not been told of any of these problems either.
Not of any Zoom problems, is that's what I'm hearing?
Yeah, we were just told about both, potentially. But at this moment in time, any further comments? Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for further comments. And Supervisor Pyska, can you respond to that question? I actually had the same question myself about how the selection of the members would go.
Well, I'm not entirely sure of the process. I was hoping that I could get some guidance from you. I'm guessing there would be a period where people would submit an application, and then I guess, I don't know how this would normally work, but would Supervisor Scott and I determine the other five chairs? I'm not sure.
Ms. Hutchinson, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, assuming your board takes action to form this committee, then shortly thereafter, staff will put out a public notice inviting people to apply, and then we would bring the applications forward to a future board meeting and let the full board make the appointments of the slots that are not yourself and Supervisor Scott. It's assumed that if the board forms this in the manner you have proposed, that Supervisor Scott and yourself are appointed to it. But for the remaining five slots, we would advertise for those.
And then it would be just like similar to further on in our agenda, where we approve the seating of such members?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board or action?
Just that having the meetings be as an as-needed basis is perfectly fine with me. I was just using seasonally as a suggestion, so whatever works for everyone works for me.
Anyone care to take action on this?
I move, let me go. I move that we form the Lake County Agricultural Advisory Committee to the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
And real quick, do you wish to create it with the specific board members on there?
Yes, with the, do I start over?
Go for it.
Okay. I moved that the Board of Supervisors form the Lake County Agricultural Advisory Committee with two board members, one from District Four and one from District Five, and then five members of the public.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Johanna, if we can get a roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska. And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're going to move on to item 6.10 or 10:30 a.m. item, consideration of update on Covid-19. And I did not see if Dr. Pace was on here with us. There he is. Welcome, Dr. Pace.
Thank you, Chair Sabatia and all the supervisors. Good morning. So we're going to give the Covid update today. Basically, I'll give a little introduction, and what I'm really wanting to talk about today is the changes in testing, the surge preparations for the hospitals as they're getting stretched, and also the vaccine rollout and distribution around the county. But I think first we'll start with Sarah, our epidemiologist. She's going to give some of the data, and so if she can share her screen and show the slides, that would be helpful.
I have granted Sarah co-host, so she should be good to share now.
Thank you, Jake.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to give a quick update of the latest stats we have at the state, regional, and county level. So here is the latest state data. We're looking at the number of new tests and the 14-day test positivity in California, 12.4%. You can see, over the last couple of days, it's roughly stabilized, which is promising news as we moved through the surge of Thanksgiving. What we're all sort of holding our breath for is to see if, does this start to increase as we move away from the Christmas holiday and the New Year holiday? Early indicators tell us that at the state level, we will continue to see an increase in testing positivity, really being driven by Southern California and San Joaquin. The increase of the curve is much more modest in the Northern California region and the Bay Area region. So that's just an early indicator, and we'll see, we'll learn a lot more in the next couple of days, but I'm cautiously optimistic in the moment for our region that we did not see as dramatic of an increase. The state reported about 30,000 new cases two days ago. The data haven't been updated today, so again, you're seeing the drop in our 14-day average at the state level in terms of new cases. Again, we'll see in the next couple of days, does this line start to increase due to the holidays and more households mixing? So I do expect that we'll see this state line start to increase in the next couple of days. There's about 22,000 Covid hospitalized patients in California, about a 500-person patient increase from the day prior. So this line will continue to increase, so as long as this line is increasing. And we've got about 1,300 ICU beds available at the state level. Really sort of a, Southern California and San Joaquin are the two regions that are really experiencing more of the extreme crisis than we are up in the northern part of the state. And the state reported about almost 27,000 Covid deaths a few days ago. So we looked at the state level, and I thought it'd be important to look at are the regions that impact us the most, because it's a different story than what's happening to the South. So here, we're looking at the daily case rate per 100,000 since the beginning of October. And Lake County is this red line here, and we've looked at this before and seen the dramatic increase we experienced from below 10 per 100,000 when we were still in that wide, that red tier or that, you know, moderate transmission tier to the increase through Thanksgiving, really peaking a couple of weeks after Thanksgiving. And we've held relatively stable at our peak at about 40 to 50 per 100,000. The green line is the rural part of the state that we are part of, Rancho, and sees similar increase, and fortunately have seen a decrease through much of December. The greater Sacramento region is also seeing a decrease as we moved out of the Thanksgiving holiday into the week of Christmas. And then we see the Bay Area in blue, which started to see a decrease really just before the Christmas holiday. So what we're all really anxious about, and we'll see in the next couple of days, is what is this line doing right here as we start to feel the impact of the Christmas Here, we're looking at Lake County testing positivity. So the blue bars are the number of Covid tests per 100,000, and so you can see, rising into the, you know, late November, the increase in testing, the demand for testing increased. So did this orange line, the testing positivity increasing to about 9%. We saw a decrease in testing demand around the Thanksgiving holiday, and again, we're creeping back up. So we'll see in the next couple of days, does that continue to increase? And I think it will. So here, we're looking at the number and percent Covid hospitalized patients in Lake County from the last two months. So the top line here is the percent of Covid-positive patients hospitalized in Lake County, and you can see, we had relatively few, and the line below that is the number of Covid-positive people hospitalized in Lake County. And you can see that it was relatively low, really until we started to feel that impact of really until we started to feel that impact of that increase in November that started to increase, really starting December 6th to peak around December 20th. And then a couple of days ago, we had about 20% of hospitalized patients in Lake County were COVID-positive. So you can see the general increase following our increase in cases. And then here, I wanted to show the impact in Lake County in the ICU. So this is since the beginning of September. And we're seeing in the gray bars the number of non-surge ICU beds that were filled, whether that patient was COVID-positive or not. And then the red line tells us the percent of those ICU patients that were COVID-positive. And so the point of this slide, just like the other one, is to show the increasing strain on the Lake County health system, which I'm sure Dr. Pace is going to talk a lot more about over the last month, as we've seen the percent of patients who are COVID-positive increase in Lake County and the number of beds at capping out about eight on most days, ranging from six to to eight. So we just looked at what's happening within the Lake County health system. But I thought it would be important to look at the the regional healthcare capacity and really understand why that's so important for all the surge planning that we're doing. So since the pandemic began, about 50% of Lake County COVID patients were hospitalized out of county. And of those, most of them received care in the Bay Area. So this is Sonoma, this is Napa, this is Oakland, this is San Francisco, a few in Marin, and about 2 in 10 received care in Mendocino County. And then in the last month, I think as we've, you know, these other areas have had, you know, increasing strain on their capabilities, about 40% of Lake County COVID patients were hospitalized out of county. As we, the graphs I just showed, we cared for more of those patients. And then the last month, nearly 8 of 10 of the patients that received care outside of the county were in the Bay Area, and 16% received care in Mendocino. So these graphs show what has already happened. And I think it's helpful to look at these in the context of understanding that we transfer most patients out to the Bay Area and then also to Mendocino, which is in that that Rancho region, the the red line on this graph. So what has happened is the percent of hospitalized patients who are COVID-positive have increased from, you know, 3 to 5% since the beginning of October to, as of a few days ago in California, well over 35%. Fortunately, here in Rancho, fairly stable since December 20th at just below 15%. Greater Sacramento, fairly stable in the mid 20s. And then the Bay Area, again, where we transfer most people, has continued to slowly increase. So we're looking at the same time period, but looking at the impact on the ICUs in the region. So this is the percent of COVID-positive ICU patients. California is the blue line. And the Bay Area is this orange line, increasing from about 10% to almost 50% a few days ago. Greater Sacramento in green. And then Rancho here in red, increasing to about 23% a few days ago. Again, more stable, but continuing to see more impact in the Bay Area. So that's what has happened. And I want to look at, oh, and this one more slide on what has happened. So this is the metric that the state is using to guide the stay-at-home order. Right, if our region drops below 15% adjusted ICU capacity, we go into the stay-at-home order. The northern region is the only region in California that is not in that order. We're here in red, about 30% remaining ICU capacity in the region yesterday. That's about 35 to 38 beds. And in the orange is the Bay Area, which has continued to decline over the time period to about 10%. And then Greater Sacramento is sort of stabilized, though obviously there's some big daily fluctuations over the last couple of weeks. So that's what has happened. And I just want to briefly talk about the 30-day projections. So in about 30 days, it's projected that there'll be 13 to 16 additional COVID deaths among Lake County residents. It's projected that there'll be an increase in 14 to 23 daily COVID hospitalizations in Lake County and that we'll have a continued need to transfer COVID patients for ICU and non-ICU care into our neighboring counties. The Bay Area being the where we transfer the most, what are they projecting in the next 30 days? They're looking at about 1,000 additional COVID deaths, an increase in about 600 additional daily COVID hospitalizations, which they have, you know, it's a huge strain, but there is capacity for. And then daily ICU utilization sees a slight increase. So and then I I'm not showing Greater Sacramento here, but Greater Sacramento is looking, is looking, as of today, a little more promising, starting to see a declining curve of hospitalizations in ICUs. But we really need to just take that with a grain of salt as we see the impact of the holidays in the next couple of days. But I am cautiously optimistic about what we're seeing in the northern part of the state at this moment. And that's all I have. I'm realizing I didn't share. Did I skip this slide? I think I did.
Yeah, we didn't see it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, let me just end here. I apologize. So this is what's happening in Lake County. We had about over 200 new cases identified in the last week. We were over 2,000 COVID cases in the county as of today. About 250 are active. And I just looked at the changes within the past week. And we're continue to see new cases identified in nearly every zip code, similar demographics as we've seen in the past. We have one additional COVID death, bringing our total to 25 deaths. And we have 17 COVID patients currently hospitalized, again, some in county, some out of county. And just a week ago, we were seeing about eight, 10 to 12 daily hospitalizations. In the last five days or so, we're seeing 16 to 18. So we're starting to see that impact of these four weeks, where we had over 200 or nearly 200 cases identified. So this week, the week of Christmas, December 20th to the 26th, the state will do the tier assignment again today. We remain in the purple tier or the widespread tier because we have more than 43 cases. And then the gray bar represents the week that just finished through Sunday. Expect to see this continue to increase as we, as electronic lab reports come in. So we're definitely feeling the strain more so than we have been within Lake County. And then we continue to have the need to transfer these people who need hospital care outside of the county as the system becomes more tacked. So when we, you know, look at the data in the next couple of days and the next week, we'll really have a, continue to have a more clear picture of what we can expect over the next 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Can I, let me go ahead and make a few comments. And then if you want to answer some questions, that's probably. So can you go back to the third slide? So there's a few points I want to emphasize. Yeah, so this is, so as Sarah mentioned, we're still in the purple tier. We probably will be for quite a while, which is no indoor dining, limiting indoor activities, basically thought to be widespread transmission in the community. But we are not in the stay-at-home order that the vast majority of the state is in, Sonoma County and Napa County and everywhere south, where there's no outdoor dining. There's basically prevents any kind of outdoor gatherings. So we're not in that position now. We are, so the this Christmas, the Thanksgiving peak, what we're seeing here on this left, left graph, where there is this sharp climb and then it's flattening a little bit. The problem is, is that if we get a Christmas peak, a Christmas surge now, we're starting at such a high rate that we could go very high at this point. So that's really the concern that because there's so much transmission in the community now, that if it continues to rise, we we could get into into real trouble. And again, as she pointed out, there's this basically 10-day to two-week lag from the case, the the curve rising on the case rate to the curve rising in the hospitalization rate. And that's a lot of what we're watching here locally. The, we're thinking that things started flattening after, kind of recently, after Thanksgiving because of this Thanksgiving surge, but also because this stay-at-home orders were being put into place around the state. So we're thinking that there has been some success from that, although it's been not, not as much as we would have hoped. But we are seeing, we're thinking that's what stopped it from continuing to rise completely. Can you go down to number nine, too? And the other point I wanted to just make, to talk about this issue with the ICU availability. So this is, you know, we're very concerned about people getting sick. We're very concerned about people dying. And we're very concerned about the hospitals getting overwhelmed. These are kind of the things we're focusing on now. The hospital, so this top line is basically the normal maximum capacity of ICU beds in the county, which is eight. They can flex a little bit to nine, to up to probably 12 or so without too much difficulty. But there is problem with staffing. So as you can see on the left-hand side of the graph, these gray lines go up to six to eight pretty much most of the time, which means that the hospital bed, the ICU beds are three-quarters to all the way full, kind of on a standard business day. And as we move further over to the right, it's getting higher and higher. And these, these red lines are the are the COVID-positive cases. So these are people that probably wouldn't have been in the hospital before COVID. And now they're filling up some of these beds so that folks that were going in for heart problems or bad diabetes or something are now not, there's not as many beds. And so these people are moving out of the county. And we've had well over 100 people now since the beginning of the pandemic that are COVID-positive that have been in the hospital. And half of those have been shipped out of county, half of them stay in. So the point is, is that when we talk about ICU capacity in Lake County, it's not really a very useful gauge because the ICUs are generally full because of the way the business model is. The problem is, is we're transporting these people out. And now we're transporting, you know, we have something like 17 people, COVID-positive people that are hospitalized right now, but only six of them are in the county. So that means 11 have moved out. So as long as the Bay Area and Sacramento and and Yucaya are willing to accept our patients and they have room, we're going to be okay as long as we can have the transportation and find the beds. When we run into a problem with the beds or with transportation, that's when we're going to start seeing a backup, where the hospitals are going to start having more people coming in the door than they could manage. They don't have enough beds, and so they're starting to keep them in the emergency room for a while. And it's just starting to back up, and we can't move them along. And that's when you start seeing what's happening down in L.A., where they start putting gurneys in the hallways and in the gift shops because they can't get people out of the hospital to another place. They don't have enough beds that are currently there, and people keep coming in the door. So that's really kind of one of the big concerns over the next several weeks that we're watching and kind of trying to plan for and trying to really pay close attention to. This is what keeps the hospital folks and the public health folks up at night is is this issue. So I just wanted to point out that from the way Sarah's projecting it, it seems like the Bay Area and our general region probably is going to be okay if the numbers hold right. There will be bad days and good days, but overall, there's not a huge mismatch. If the projections from Christmas are a lot worse than we, if the reality of Christmas is a lot worse than we had projected, we could be in trouble because there's just not that much more flexibility available. And so you can go ahead and stop sharing now if you want. And then the last point I wanted to make was because there's so many cases now, there's, you know, there's 250 active cases in the county right now. So that means that the virus is everywhere. And so I think the, one of the big take-home messages is from all these slides she's showing is that it's out there. There's, if you're out mixing with people at work or at the grocery store or anyplace, you are coming in contact with the virus. And so the, really, the recommendation is now to stay home, if at all possible, for as long as possible. And that means if you're exercising, exercised by yourself or with somebody in your family, if you're eating someplace and you're taking your mask off, you should probably just be doing it with people in your family and not anybody else. If you're going to work, you're probably getting some exposure there. And you need to be wearing your mask and keeping at least six feet apart. And we're worried about the ventilation system. So if you can work from home, if you can stagger shifts, all those kinds of things. If you're going to the grocery store, go really early or really late. Because if you go when there's a long line of people, you are getting exposed to the virus. And so it's really a change in focus because before, we were trying to identify the virus and then contain it. And now it's, you know, the fires are burning everywhere. And so we can't really contain it anymore until the numbers go down. And especially after this Christmas, where there's been so much activity, so many people in the airports and things, that I think we're just, we're probably at the point where the most, the wisest thing for most people to do is just to put themselves on some kind of voluntary stay-at-home situation, if it's at all possible. And if it's not possible, then to really take steps to keep safe. And then that leads to the vaccine discussion. So we'll go into that more. But I just wanted to kind of use the the data that Sarah was showing to kind of make some points. So I don't, do you all want to ask questions of Sarah now? Or you want me to just keep going?
I'm, I'm good with you. Keep going. Is there any specific questions for Sarah from the board?
Okay.
Seeing none, let's, let's keep going.
Okay, thanks. So we are, you know, as I'm saying, there, there are some, we do have places that we're monitoring more closely, some of the congregate living situations, the jail, the nursing homes. There's the tribal outbreak that was going on. All these are doing okay right now. I think people are, have gotten good at how to monitor and how to contain it as best as possible. And so while we're seeing consistent clusters coming up in these places, the outbreaks are under fairly good control right now. In the business community, there's a lot of positive cases in a whole cross-section of businesses. And I'm sure most people listening here, you either know people or at your workplace or whatever, there are positive cases or people that are in contact with cases. And so this is just going on across the board at this point. And we are continuing to try to counsel businesses on how to disinfect and how to, how to do the contact tracing there. But we're really backing away from trying to close them down because there's just so many and it's just doesn't, you know, doesn't seem to be helping all that much. And so we're just encouraging people to do the right thing. And I think the community, going into the stores and going into businesses, you just need to know that there's very likely positive cases around you now. And so to avoid as much as possible going into those places, going into workplaces like that. So this is all leading to a big pivot. We are continuing to do the testing. The testing is still going on. And if you think you've been exposed or you think you have symptoms, it's probably a really good idea to go get tested so that, one, you know that you've had it, and, two, that you can really take extra precautions, especially for people in your household and things like that. So the testing is changing, though. Verily Site is going to be ending in two days. So Thursday should be the last day for the Verily Site. They've been here since, I believe it's May. And so it's been, you know, like eight months or something now. It's been a huge asset for our community, really helped us to do a good job here and to really be kind of some of the lowest transmission in the state for a long, long time. And they've really worked with us well. We've had a lot of volunteers from the community and from other departments around the county. And so we've been extremely appreciative of how that's going. The state changed the contract. And so now is, we're going to be having Optum Serve. So Optum Serve has been in many parts of the state throughout the whole duration of this. Now they have the one, the single-state contract. The problem is for Lake, what that meant is that we were going to need, they basically really told us we were going to have to set it up in buildings. So we couldn't do the drive-through anymore like we had been doing. And we had some other sites like Middletown and Upper Lake, and those had to be discontinued. So now we have two sites. This is going to be starting on Friday, this coming Friday, Friday the 8th. And it should be going forward. There's always the potential that there's some problem in the transition. But they, you know, we have the contract signed and everything's going forward at this point. So in Lakeport, it's going to be on Monday, Friday, and Saturday at the Lakeport Community Center. It's going to be seven in the morning till seven at night. And you have to, you get out, go inside and get, get tested in there. There's three ways to make appointments. One is online. One is online appointment or you can call and they have bilingual people on the, on the call line is what we're told. And, or you can just walk in and there's going to be a limited amount of appointments available for people that just walk in. So there's three, it's going to be much more accessible and it has been seven in the morning till seven at night. So 12 hours instead of like three to five hours, which is what we've been doing. And the other thing is they do kids. So we're kind of excited about the expanded access for the community. In, at the other end of the lake, we're going to have it at the Lower Lake Town Hall and it's going to be the same hours, the same setup. So, but it's going to be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in Lower Lake, Monday, Friday, Saturday in Lakeport, seven to seven. You can get all this information on our webpage or there's been some press releases that have come out with all of it. But we think it's going to improve the access for the community. The one other thing is that Rite Aid in Clear Lake is now doing drive through testing on the old Verily platform with, so you can, you can also get it there through the project baseline is how you make the appointments for that. So we think there's going to be pretty good testing availability around the county for all this. Until that point, until Friday, we're going to continue with the, with the Verily sites. It's today, it's in Clear Lake. Wednesday and Thursday is going to be in Lakeport. And then after that, we're going to stop that whole setup and just go to this Optum Serve site. So we hope that that's going to be a good, a good setup for the community overall. The next thing I wanted to talk about was the hospital surge situation. So this is kind of based a lot on the data that Sarah showed that we're, there's been concerns about how much hospital bed availability there's going to be because so many more people are getting sick now. And, and kind of as you do the projections of how many people will be getting sick from COVID in the coming weeks, it looks a little bit scary, but it doesn't look overwhelming. Just to say though, that right now we are having trouble, one of the hospitals has backed up a little bit. We're having some trouble getting enough transportation to get people out of the area to the hospital beds that they're finding. They have been able to locate some beds, but you know, it's getting to be that point where we're having some backup. We've seen this a couple of times already where it started and then we're able to get people out and that, you know, the hospital folks just keep, keep plugging away and keep trying to find some beds and trying to find the transportation and, and it's worked so far. But we have been seeing some of these more concerning situations where it's, we're having trouble getting people out in a timely fashion. Definitely causes some, some concern. The state is talking about doing some regional expansions of sites as needed. So, you know, we're all just, we're on calls pretty much every day about this, planning locally, regionally and statewide. And there's a lot of effort going in. If you watch the LA situation, very, very concerning. As Sarah was pointing out, the Bay Area seems to be somewhat better. So we're, we're just kind of keeping going with that. And then the vaccine is the, is the biggest topic to talk about today. So you've probably seen a lot about the vaccine kind of in the news and everything. And we are really starting to try to pivot most of our attention to getting the vaccine as available as possible. So the trick here is, is that it's a very unclear supply chain. We so far have gotten 975 of the Pfizer and we've gotten about 400 of the Moderna. So we've gotten, so that's 1375. We should be getting the second dose of Pfizer, maybe today or tomorrow. And we should be getting some more Moderna this week. But that's kind of what we got. They, we, we are going to go ahead and we get an allocation every week. We order everything that they allocate us to us and we just keep going week by week. But I can't really say like, okay, if we do everything today, next week we're going to have 500 more doses that we can keep going like that. That's not the way the supply chain is working right now. The state doesn't know. I, I'm not sure the manufacturers even know what they've got going right now. So it's just, it's kind of week by week. And what we're trying to do is to match the supply of vaccine we have with the people that are considered the highest priority in terms of, you know, their highest risk in terms of contact and also kind of able to help keep the medical system functioning during this surge that's coming. So we're, it's kind of tricky. There's this tier system that we're working with. It's really been done, the state in conjunction with the CDC, with the federal folks have made these kind of tiers of priority. And, you know, it's pretty easy to argue, well, why is that person up at that level of priority? And we're getting emails all day long of people kind of wanting to advocate that their people should be further up in line. But we're really trying to stick with this and be fairly meticulous and get the vaccine out as quickly as possible, kind of working through this, at least offering it to the people in the proper level. And if they choose not to do it or they want to wait, that's fine, then we'll go on and maybe we'll be able to get back to them in time, maybe not, I don't know. It's, it's all moving very fast right now. So we've gotten about 1375 so far into the county for, through the health department. And we've gotten about half of that into people's arms now so far in the two and a half weeks since this has started. We've been focusing on the, the acute care hospitals. So both of the hospitals have done the step, most of the staff that want, that have been interested in the vaccine. And now the hospitals are getting vaccine through their corporate chain. So we're not focusing on them anymore. The emergency medical service folks that do the medical EMS have all been vaccinated that wanted, they've all been offered the vaccine and, and they've all been vaccinated that wanted for the first round. The nursing home facilities are getting it through the state, through their pharmacies, but they haven't been able to start yet and they're probably not going to be starting till mid-January or so. So we're starting to try to do the staff at the nursing homes so that we can get those folks protected. But we're, we're holding off on the residents so that the pharmacies can come in and do that. And then the dialysis folks in the community. So that's been the first group and we're pretty much done with everybody in there offering it to them and getting it to them. And that's kind of was our big focus. The next level is a little more complicated because this is going to be the outpatient clinics, some of the outpatient medical practices, the public health field staff, the durable medical equipment folks, the congregate living facilities, like the substance abuse, inpatient substance abuse, the, some of those places and jail medical and also the, some of the first responders that are not part of EMS, so sheriffs, deputies and things like that. And then the in-home supportive services folks. So the people, not so much the people that are taken care of, their family member in the house and they're not moving around a lot. But we really wanted to target the people that are, have multiple, are caregivers for multiple people. So they're moving from house to house of a very vulnerable population. So this is the focus for this week and next week. We're trying to get these people all vaccinated in this time period. And the way we're doing that is we're setting up daily vaccine clinics. There's, it looks like we're going to, we started out with two hours long. We need longer, so I think we're going to make them four hours long. We're getting a lot of help from the chief Cepeda and the EMS team out in the community that are helping us to do some of these vaccinations. We're getting some support from law enforcement and keeping an eye on things. And, you know, we're, we're going to be needing some help for some of the, some volunteers and some DSWs through the county system. So we're going to be trying to get more and more help because this is going to get to be a really big deal. But I think this is going to be really where the focus needs to be for us getting through this COVID situation. So as we're putting these together, we're making appointments for people so they can't just show up, but they get an appointment through their, through their agency or through your behavioral service, behavioral health person or DSS person, you get an appointment through them and then you come get the shot and we, we keep an eye on you and take care of it like that. And then we'll, we'll work with you about getting the second shot three to four weeks later. Once we get through these folks in the next couple of weeks, and probably we're going to start in the next week or so for this, is then we go to the third tier, which is going to be dental clinics, pharmacy folks, specialty clinics, kind of the other medical folks that haven't been included in the other groups. And so we're hoping that really by the end of next week or the beginning of the following week, that we get all of our vaccine out and that we've covered this whole group. And then as we keep getting more, then we go into the next tier, which is going to be a lot more complicated because that's really the essential workers, teachers, farm workers, food service workers, other folks like that. Also the people with chronic medical illnesses and people 74 and older. So once we get to that phase, we're going to need to have these bigger, what we're calling mass vaccination clinics, where we're doing a hundred to 200 people a day. And we're really going to need some support for that in terms of just getting volunteers because I tell you, we've got three main nurses that are doing the vast majority of the nursing work here. And that's keeping the testing going, kind of monitoring all the positive cases in the community, educating people as they need it, and now having to deal with this whole vaccine thing too. So it's, it's a very intense time in our department and we're really kind of, rather than trying to track people down that don't really want to be tracked down for the contact trace and everything, we're trying to pivot and shift on to this vaccine thing. So I think the, you know, there's a couple of little questions that come up about the vaccine and then I'll finish with this and I'm, in case there's some questions, but there, the cold storage thing came up, but people might've been aware that yesterday they had a glitch over in Mendocino County and one of the freezers went down and they had to quickly get all the vaccine out and into people's arms within a couple of hours, which was a kind of a miracle that they did it, but they did it. We have been working with it in dry ice and coolers, which is, and our team is very, very astute, very good at doing this. And we've been able to manage it okay during this time and we should be able to get it out without any problem before the expiration date. But just to know that that's kind of how we're managing in Lake County. The other thing is safety concerns. There's been, you know, what we're talking about is vaccine hesitancy and people concerned about the safety. One of the things we've seen out of the seven, eight hundreds that have been given out so far in the county, there's not really been people that have had to miss work. You know, there was concern that sore arm or headaches or fever were going to lead to a day or two of miss work. That hasn't really happened so far that we're aware of. Some people are suggesting that the second dose is more likely to cause that. So we'll see when we get to that point, which is going to be next week. The, there haven't really, there's been not really any of these kind of bad allergic reactions. We had one person that was a little bit woozy and we called the EMS folks. We are going to have EMTs at the site whenever we're doing these mass vaccine, vaccination clinics so that there will be, you know, a level of protection there if people need it. They did have a couple of cases in a neighboring county that were, that was concerning. So we're definitely aware and watching it. There do seem to be rare cases of usually people that have had allergic, kind of severe allergic reactions before of having some response to this. But for the most part, it's been very, very benign and no big deal so far. So I think, you know, just to end here, and I'm sorry this has gone on so long, but there's just been so much happening that it seems important to share it is that I think the next eight weeks are going to be pretty tough, pretty touch and go for us all over the state, but especially in Lake because we're small and we just don't have a whole lot of resources. I really encourage people to avoid situations where they might be around other people that aren't from their home. I think it's just a really good time to just stay home and keep your head down. Sarah's was sort of cautiously optimistic and, you know, I hope she's right. I'm not quite so optimistic right now. And we're, you know, I'm on calls with the hospitals and with the state and it's, it's getting tight and, you know, people are getting sick and it's, it's really disturbing when somebody you love gets sick from this, that, you know, if you'd just stayed home, it's, you might've been able to prevent it. So the masks are still important to wear. The, the masks are important to wear, even if you get vaccinated, we're still not sure whether, even though it seems to prevent people from getting really sick, we're not sure whether it actually prevents the spread of it. So it's possible, the way that, the way the vaccine works is it's, it, it's not a live vaccine, so you don't have to worry about getting the virus from it. It's just a protein that stimulates the immune system. And, but we still don't know whether it actually stops people from getting a low bit of it and they can still be transmitting it or whether it's, and so in that case, it's only preventing people from getting sick or does it just stop people from getting the virus altogether? Different viral vaccines work in different ways. And so we're, they just haven't, they're in the process of doing this study, but we don't know at this point. So I think the bottom line is people need to keep wearing the masks even if they get the vaccine. People need to be really, really careful right now, work from home if you can, go to the store at off hours, you know, do all these things in a different way than you've done it before. The thing is, is that it's different now. Whatever you've been able to do for the last couple of months and get away with it and not get sick, that's not the situation anymore. The virus is so much more prevalent in the community. You can see that graph that Sarah showed, there's something like over 200 cases when a lot of times there was, you know, 20 a week before. So it's 10, out of 100 people, instead of one person having it like it would have been before, now 10 to 20 people probably have it. And so you're much more likely to run into it now. And, but we, I think with this vaccine, very optimistic that things are going to turn better. The schools are really working towards trying to, to get more onsite learning going in the next couple of months. And there's just more and more push to getting things going and having it be safer. But it's not, this is not the period of time when that's true. It's going to be pretty hard this next several weeks. So I think I'll stop there and then we can answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pace. Any questions or comments from the board?
No questions for me. It was very thorough. Just like to thank you and your staff and your team for all the hard work. I know it's been an incredibly stressful time and I, I know we were all kind of hoping this was going to be coming to an end and, and I hope Sarah's right that she's optimistic that this is, you know, this, we're not going to get that surge. So I'm really hopeful, but everybody needs to continue doing the right thing and staying at home when possible, social distancing, wearing your mask. I was very pleased today when I came into the chambers and everybody here did have a mask on. So just thank you again for, for all your hard work.
I, I dropped off for a minute, so I'm not sure if I missed something, but how are you, are you withholding the second dose or are you counting on that coming in another shipment? Or what's the strategy for that to make sure that there's no lapse in that, that second dose?
So the second dose has gotten a lot of attention lately. There's been some discussion at the federal level and state level about whether even to just kind of ignore the second dose for now and just vaccinate everybody with the first dose and then try to get a second dose as we, as it comes available. That's not the strategy that the federal government has decided to go with nor the state, so we're not doing that. The state, so for example, we got 975 doses of Pfizer vaccine three weeks ago. The state kept 975 second doses for us and then we have to order it again, which we did, so we should be getting that in the next couple of days. It's the same with the Moderna. They're, they're keeping it aside to make sure we don't get into that situation.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, Dr. Pace, I asked this yesterday, but I just wanted to do it for the public to hear. I know we discussed the tiers of who would receive them in preference or, or the demand of need, the way that the state said it. But when, when could folks that are in the demographic of like over 70 or in need of the vaccine, when can they expect to, to start looking at trying to get vaccinated? And if so, where, where would we, have we thought about places that we can consider doing this?
Right, well, thanks for asking that because this is the big question and we're getting a lot of requests from the public about how to think about this. And so it's good to be able to kind of talk publicly so that people understand how we're thinking about it. You know, we're really focusing on these tiers and the first tier, we should be finishing by the end of next week, early the week after that. And as, the question is, is we don't really know how much vaccine is going to be coming in. I think, and the state has not specifically outlined this, what they call phase one B, which is the essential workers, folks with chronic medical illness and the folks 74 and older. So that, that's the, what they're calling phase one B. And they're still kind of arguing about how, who's going to be first in line and how to do that within that tier. I suspect teachers are going to be pretty high up there, law enforcement, public transit workers, some of those folks are going to be, farm workers and food service workers are going to be up there too. So I kind of think what they're going to do is go after those people, kind of prioritize those people and then the, the older folks and the folks with chronic medical illness. But we're still not sure yet. So that, that guidance will probably be coming down this week. So if you watch the news, you'll be able to see. I think realistically in Lake County, what's going to happen is this is probably, we'll start getting to that tier, not, not next week, but the week after that. So towards the end of January, I think we're going to start. So towards the end of January, I think we're going to start trying to get those folks vaccinated. And what that's going to mean, these are going to be big vaccination sites. We're going to be setting up sort of sites where 100, 200 people a day are going to come and get vaccinated. And the way, what it looks like is they're going to come in, they'll probably have some kind of appointment, and sign in, show their ID, will understand where they fit into this, you know, what their illness is, have to make sure that they meet the criteria, because part of what we're trying to prevent, we're trying to prevent people from cutting in line in front of other people, because that's very disturbing when somebody gets in front of you, if you feel like you're at risk and you need this thing. And they will come and show an ID, if they are the person that they need to be in, get in that tier, they'll come over, we'll give them a shot, then they'll sit in a seat for a half hour afterwards, so that we can make sure they don't have this allergic reaction. So that's kind of the way it'll go. I'm hoping that it's going to be, you know, mid-January, a little bit later into the, that we're going to be starting this. We'll probably be putting out these mass vaccination dates and ways to make appointments, and we're going to need volunteers to help with it. It's going to be a big deal, and we'll be moving forward through that tier, basically depending on how quickly we get the vaccine in and how quickly we can kind of coordinate these sites. So it's, you know, as you can imagine, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts here that we don't really get the answer to until the day beforehand, and then we're kind of running fast. But it's, so to, I can't really give a date, but I'm thinking we're going to be starting that group later this month and moving forward like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Dr. Pace from the board?
So I do want to say to Dr. Pace, I appreciate the efforts that you've made throughout this whole entire pandemic for the testing, even though the testing has its own headaches in getting adequate turnaround on the results, to getting the facilities and the contracts in place. But I do know that, I appreciate the fact that you fought hard to get Verily over here, and you fought hard to get Optum over here as well, which will start later this week or next week. Just wanted to also mention that we did try to continue the service of the testing over in the city of Clear Lake. I'm happy to hear that, that CVS, Rite Aid is going to be doing some testing, continuing through Verily. But with the, looking for a building, a specific area in order to locate the testing, it seemed pretty proper to try and get in between all the people who have needs in Middletown, all the people who have needs in Lower Lake, and all the people who have needs in Clear Lake as well. And Lower Lake is a good middle ground area where everyone can access to get that testing. So that's, definitely appreciate that it's there, look for a place in Clear Lake, but that seemed the more suitable and easy place to get those things moving, and I'm glad that we got that going. I, we've been talking about the surge for a long time. We talked about it in, in, back in April. It never happened. And, and I think we should just count our blessings that it didn't happen at that point. And we are definitely seeing the issues that we all thought were far away and foreign to us when looking over in what happened in Europe and what happened in New York. And that's what they're going through right now in LA. It's a lot closer to home. LA is literally right now the epicenter of the entire COVID-19 pandemic in, in the world. It is not good what is happening there. So I feel very fortunate that while our numbers are not as good as they used to be, when compared to what else is happening around us in neighboring counties, and especially in Southern California, we're definitely not seeing the same impact. But it's all about doing the right thing. And, and we do need to continue to be as vigilant as possible and as careful as possible to try and reduce those numbers so that we can try to go back to what we used to have, if not going back to something much better than what we used to have. So I do appreciate that. I do know that there was a lot of conversation in my state phone call that I was involved with yesterday. Many counties are struggling with their testing sites. Some counties entirely have lost their testing sites and are using neighboring counties. And so that's, again, why I started with the appreciation for the fact that we have a testing site here in Lake County, and not only here in Lake County, but that back and forth between North Shore area, or at least access from the North Shore area to the South Shore area. And now all counties are in that same situation. So I appreciate that. I do also appreciate all the work that Sarah's been doing, ever since she's been on board. The data gathering and the data that's been provided to us helps us kind of understand and see where we are making projections and how we are making projections by providing those graphs to us. None of the projections are a reality of what will happen, it's a possibility of what will happen based on what we know, and it's always been as such. But to see it visually and to discuss it specifically, I do appreciate that, as I've been hammering hard on, on providing that data and having that data. And so I just wanted to share that appreciation. We have tough times still ahead. I know we talk a lot about Christmas. Personally, I'm more worried about what happened on New Year's than Christmas. I think Christmas is a little bit more intimate with our families, while New Year's is a little bit more, unfortunately, of a social exercise that we take part in. So hopefully, we don't see our numbers jump too much when those numbers come through, and that'll be in the next couple of weeks. But we'll see what happens. And again, I think we just need to keep doing what we've been told to do this entire time, keep our masks on, social distance, and do our best to get those numbers back down. So appreciate the hard work. Any other comments before I open it up to the public?
Yeah, yes, Dr. Pace, you know, obviously, I'd like to thank you and all your staff for all the work that's being done through at this point in the pandemic. But I did have a couple of questions. One would be staffing. I've heard you talk about it a couple of different times. I know we, we've done some stuff here recently with the budgets, give you opportunities, hopefully, to increase that. But my concern is, obviously, just as yours, when we do have the opportunity to do these large vaccination clinics, are we going to push to get some support from the state, but also being prepared here locally? Do you envision anything coming to the board where we can help support you in that here, you know, sooner than later? So that's kind of a double question there. And then if you could also go into some of the new enforcement stuff that's coming down from the state, Cal OSHA, some of the business requirements, because we do have a lot of businesses that are operating, and want to make sure that we get it out there to the public on some of these new requirements, you know, that, that are being instated now after the first of the year.
Right, thank you, supervisor. Those are great questions. So the staffing question is up again. We really appreciate the board's help in terms of getting the salaries at a competitive level with neighboring counties, and I think we're there now. We've, you know, we've, we've had trouble getting staff at public health kind of historically, and now we're still kind of at about the same staffing level. We were at pre-COVID, and, you know, we still have to do all the regular jobs that are part of it, and then we have all these other things on top. And now with the vaccines, it's, you know, there's simply no way we're going to be able to do hundreds of people a day vaccinating with the staff we have. So we are, we're meeting today, we're meeting with HR tomorrow, we're working on just what exactly our specific needs are going to be, and how to, how to kind of get, get the kind of workforce that we need to get this out. Because, you know, when you look at what's happening at the state and federal level, there's, there's, the vaccine is starting to get to places, but they're having trouble getting it into people's arms in a timely fashion. We, we aren't there yet because we've gotten, we've only gotten so much, and we've been really working on this tier priority thing. But once we get to the bigger tiers, like Supervisor Crandall was asking about, the folks with chronic medical illness and the elders and the essential workers, you know, there's thousands and thousands of people there that need to get vaccinated. And so we are going to be kind of getting our list together of staff we need to hire, temporary staff that we need to think about doing, DSWs, the, the support through other county agencies, and volunteers from the community. And we're going to kind of put together a package, and we'll get back to you, we'll be working with HR, but, you know, next time I give a report, I'll let you know how it's going with that. The state is saying they're going to start putting vaccinators out into the community, but, you know, basically, Sunday night, they came out and said, okay, the governor's wants us to really get these vaccines out to people, so what's the problem? And of course, all of us said, we don't have enough staff. And they said, okay, we'll work on that, but we want you to get all the vaccine you have out into the people's arms by the end of next week. You have 10 days. And it's like, well, you, you ask us if we need some staffing support, and we say, yeah, but, and then you say, you got to get this all taken care of in 10 days. There's no way the state's going to get staff to us by then. But I think they're starting to recognize the, just the huge immensity of it. I think we were thinking the hospitals were going to be able to do more, and the clinics were going to be able to do more. But I think the simple fact that it's just so big, and there's so many people that need to be vaccinated as soon as possible, that we're going to just really have to set up these big vaccination clinics. And so I think the state is going to send some people to us. We don't really know how many, we don't really know when, and we don't know when the vaccine's coming. So we're just kind of trying to keep up with everything as it's coming at us, and when we get some help, we will. But so, long answer, but we're, we're, we are actively putting together a list of what we need, and going to be working with HR and the volunteer folks to how to set this up. So next time I see you, I'll give you a full report on how we're doing and what we need. So thanks for asking that. The other question was, sorry, what was the second question?
The other part, Cal OSHA, that's going to be coming down. I know there are some new laws that came into place as far as, you know, requirements from employers and letting their employees know when it's happened. So there hasn't been a lot of conversation on that, so I thought there'd be an opportunity to talk about it today.
Right, thank you. Yeah, there's a, there's a bunch of things. And maybe Supervisor Sabatier may want to mention some of the small business supports that were being discussed, or Supervisor Crandall, that were being discussed at the recovery meeting the other day. But also, the, Cal OSHA now has new requirements, starting December 1st, that businesses need to be taking active steps to protect their workers. And if there's three or more cases within a 14-day period, that they need to report that to the local health department and to Cal OSHA. There have been, you know, when there seems to be businesses that are, and Cal OSHA focuses mainly on the employees, not on the connection with the public, but if, so they need to be taking proper safety precautions. And if that's not happening, Cal OSHA is interested and wants to know about that and to come visit the business to help support them. I mean, again, we've been working with our environmental health people all along. When they go out and talk to the businesses, you know, we, they're doing several of these a day now, I think. And they go out and talk to them, and almost always, the business will say, oh, yeah, we thought we were doing a pretty good job, but maybe we were slipping here, and we need to talk to the employees again. Or that was a day when we had somebody new that didn't really know what was going on. So for the most part, it's been very much collaborative and working to try to keep the public safe. The, Cal OSHA is probably the, the state agency that seems to be most engaged in this. I think the ABC, the Alcohol Commission, also is interested in places that are serving alcohol that are not in compliance with the, the state public health order. We have been posting our compliance officer position, and that's one of the things we're going to be talking about at our staffing meeting tomorrow, because we're, I'm not sure how many people have applied and just where that whole thing is at. So that's one of the staffing pieces that we need to get clear on and figure out how to move forward with. But, yeah.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pace.
Thank you. And just to carry on the comment that Dr. Pace made about what's available out there, there's, there is a bunch of funding that is being made available for those businesses that have been impacted by COVID-19 in the state of California. There is the California Small Business COVID-19 Relief Grant, where you can make anywhere between $5,000, $15,000, or $25,000, I believe it is, depending on what your revenues have been in the past year, or years past, looking at your 2018 or 2019 tax forms. That, you can go to ca-reliefgrant.com, calreliefgrant.com, and go ahead and apply there. You'll get to choose one of the counties, and then one of the affiliates that will help you process that application. I know that they've had some ups and downs, but at the same time, it seems to, some of it has been resolved. And I just spoke with somebody yesterday who was able to go through the process and submit their application. So it's definitely available and possible to get through. Seems the hiccups have been solved. Then the federal government also passed another stimulus where both the PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program, and the IDOL, which is, I don't even remember, environmental impact or economic impact, I forget the specific acronym, also known as IDOL. IDOL can give you up to $10,000, and the PPP is up to $2 million, again, depending on your revenue and your losses and everything else. I believe that the PPP you can apply now, but at the same time, no guidelines have been specifically created. So your application can be submitted, but it cannot be processed, since no guidelines have been completely approved for quite yet. It's, we're creating ideas before we finalize programs, and unfortunately, it means that we, we're stuck waiting. And so those are all available. Did have a meeting with the new committee that we created not too long ago for helping and support our small businesses here in the county. If you are interested in these grant programs, please go to ca.lakecountyedc.org, is it? Or is it dot com? Either dot org or dot com. Or go ahead and, and contact our Lake EDC, so that they can help you understand the process better and provide some information for you and assist you. And so, yeah, there's, there's a lot going on, and it's very unfortunate. I will say that there, there are some frustrations on my end, and I'll just vent on one thing only, and it's, it's kind of something we can't really do about. But the idea that the laws coming from the state of California, not submitted by us or not submitted by anyone locally, but we're following the rules that are told to us from up above, have restricted or shut down some of our businesses for the idea to stop and slow the virus. Yet, when the virus is in the other businesses that have been, remained open, and, and we know that there's a lot of, of cases there, there, we're at a point where there's so many that we're not able to do anything. And so it's, it's a very frustrating point of, it's just, it's tough, it's tough. So I feel for those that are being impacted by these rules and regulations. We're trying our best to offer some assistance, and we're trying our best to make the change. So help us, and we'll, we'll continue to try and help you. Any other comment before I open it up for the public?
Economic injury disaster loans, IDOL.
Thank you. Economic injury loans. Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room for public comment.
All right. I will, I've sent a mute request out to the Zoom floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, it sounds like we don't have any comments, any public comments here in the board chambers? And seeing none, we'll bring it back, unless there's, is there any further comments from the board? Okay, so Dr. Pace, I know you have another item a little further down, 7.6. We've been here since 9:00 AM. We're going to take a five-minute, or let's, let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back at 12:00 and go ahead and start with that item. I know that that way we can go ahead and let you go. I'm sure there's many other things you could be doing right now. So let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll come back at 12:00 noon on the dot. Check, check. So it's 12 o'clock. Just checking in with Jake and Sam, are we ready to move forward?
Yeah, I'm ready when you guys are.
Okay. And then just wanted to check also with Joanna and Ms. Hutchinson, are we ready to go to?
I'm good. I want to make sure Johannes.
I want to make sure Johannes got audio.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
All right. So let's reconvene and move on to item 7.6. Consideration of an Agreement Between Lake County Health Services and Kanokutai, I think I said that correctly, Native Wellness, Inc., for RFP number LCHS 20-002 Prevention, Detection and Support. A Lake County COVID-19 Initiative for Native American-Focused Outreach for a One-Time Cost of $70,900 and authorize the Board Chair to sign. And I believe this is Dr. Pace. Or?
Actually, Ayesha Miller, our program director's gonna be presenting this.
So, um, I have been working with the department to give them a little support. I agendized this item on behalf of the department, and Ayesha knows the details. So, Ayesha, if you're here, let's present the item. If you can turn on your video. There she is. Jake, you see her? Will you enable her?
Thank you.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes. Thanks. Thank you, and good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. This is Ayesha Miller, Health Services Program Manager. And this afternoon, for your review and consideration, is the contract agreement. And this contract is a result of our RFP that we put out in December. The Prevention, Detection and Support, a Lake County COVID-19 Initiative for the Native American-Focused Outreach. Case data reports released identified that the Native American population is experiencing a disproportionately higher rate of COVID-19 infection. The Lake County Native American population makes up about 3.3% and is 8% of the COVID-19 cases right now. To address this concern, Health Services issued the RFP in December that encompasses resource coordination, outreach and engagement, campaign strategy, information dissemination, and project management of a COVID-19 prevention campaign for the Native American population of Lake. The overall goal with this RFP is to reduce the daily case rate among the population of focus. The RFP selection committee selected Kanokutai Native Wellness, Inc. The selected recipients, as you stated, will be receiving $70,900 over two-year period. That is grant-funded through the CARES grant to assist us in our outreach efforts. The contract would begin this month and end in November 2022. The Kanokutai Native Wellness Group has been presenting workshops, conferences, and programs in Lake County since 2016 to the Native American community and to non-Native community members regarding Native American history and social issues, healing and wellness. Their team has specialized extensive experience with public health prevention, improving access to services, and developing culturally responsive materials, services, and resources. We at Health Services welcome the support of Kanokutai Native Wellness and are looking forward to the implementation of the proposed innovative culturally appropriate services and COVID-19 outreach initiative. So, thank you for your time and consideration, and are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Ayesha. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, I, I do have, I, I need to word myself correctly, because it's not an issue. I love what we're trying to do, but I'm gonna be honest, I don't think it's enough. The issues that we're talking about don't stem from COVID-19. It stems from pre, previous, a pre-existing condition created in our society. Um, whether it's access to healthcare, whether it's access to education, whether it's access to the proper infrastructure to be able to, uh, meet the needs of what we're asking people to do during COVID-19. And I see us doing something that has good intentions, but I see us, when COVID-19 is over, that there will be no changes that has been done to impact this community and putting them in a better standing. Um, and I'd like to see us look a little bit more broadly. How can we use COVID-19 to help move things forward? And I appreciate the conversation I had, Miss, with Ms. Hutchinson about this yesterday, because she said, shared an analogy that I'm gonna share with you right now, which is, we're doing that for homelessness. We're, we're, we're not just doing a Band-Aid approach. We're actually trying to put them in homes, and we're actually trying to change the, their lives. If you look at the numbers, which is really unfortunate, but they're real. When you look at the numbers for Native Americans and, and the, the social standing, we could do a whole lot better. And to look at COVID-19, I think, let's not just look at COVID-19. How can we impact that community with this program and use COVID-19 in a way to make a permanent change rather than a temporary change that provides respite during COVID-19? How can we marry both of those things together to make a bigger change? Uh, and I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if that needs to change within this agreement or contract, or if it can be done under the guise of this contract. But that's what I would like to see, is how do we have long-term, permanent impact? Because we know that the impacts, the, 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 the impacts of societies' inequalities were already there to begin with, which is why we're having the discussions right now. And the following week, we're gonna have the same discussions about our Latino community, which is, in my opinion, no different. It's still one of those inequalities that exist within our communities, which creates this issue that we want to take care of, because it's, it's not right. So how can we use this contract for a more permanent change to help and provide assistance in what that change needs to be?
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, you know, just had a comment on that, uh, you know, Supervisor Sabatier, and I've heard you say it a couple of times, um, but I think really what, you know, this is a, a single contract to, you know, to really address the COVID-19 issue, initiative right now, to get the message out to our local tribal communities on what are safe events, you know, what you should be doing. You know, ultimately, there is a cultural divide here in the United States, and there is a federal mandate from, you know, uh, the trust responsibility of the United States government, and that comes from the federal level, uh, to work down through the tribes. So, um, I think this is a step in the right direction. I appreciate your questions when you ask those, but this is really a, a trust responsibility that's been lacking here in the United States, um, you know, for our native communities. And I think anything this board can do and community members to help get that message to the federal government and their trust responsibilities are always a step forward to help our tribal communities. And, you know, I don't know if Supervisor Crandall would like to add in on that, but I do want to say that I appreciate Dr. Pace and our, our health officers here in Lake County, uh, really working with the tribal governments. I know we have, uh, you know, calls that are happening for the COVID-19, uh, information that is being passed back and forth, uh, you know, and working through our businesses and other entities that are affected. So I think it's a step in the right direction. I always like to hear that from a, a different community. Uh, we need to do more. We definitely do. I think it's more of a federal, um, issue, uh, coming down to the tribal nations, so.
Yeah, I'd have to agree, actually, with both of you. Um, I really appreciate the dialogue. Um, and, and I really think that we're in that direction as a board when it comes to, um, some of these guidelines, like, like Supervisor Simon stated, uh, the, um, trust responsibility is where there's been a struggle. But, you know, with us having more, um, you know, personal work, uh, for example, months back, there was a situation where we worked with that tribe to get the document done. There's specific things as such that, that take place now that may not have taken place before. And so, um, I, I do, I do implore, uh, what Supervisor Sabatier had stated, that it would be nice to see us make more permanent change in certain situations and kind of take, take advantage of a auspicious situation to get more done for the community. Um, but in regard to the group that we're, we're doing a contract with, I, I couldn't feel more comfortable with this group. Um, Kanokutai is actually the actual way you state Kanakta, the way people say Kanakta. Kanokutai is the mountain. And so, um, and so this group, I know, I've worked, I've seen them do the work. They've educated the county. They've educated people, um, in history. And, uh, they also are very closely tied to the traditional values of our, of our communities as well. So I think we've, I think we're in, uh, in a good direction with the people that we've chosen. So, um, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and, and I really liked the dialogue. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
And I see that we do have Kyle Bill, who is a representative of Kanokutai. Uh, he has his hand raised, wondering if we can unmute him. Jake, please.
Uh, thank you, um, Board of Supervisors. And Bruno, um, it, it's a really good question, and I just felt compelled to, um, address it. I think that, um, the, the issue that was raised about the relationship, um, i- is a very valid and important question to have raised. Um, but I do believe that this grant is an opportunity for us to begin mending those relationships that will be long-lasting beyond COVID. Um, us not having, um, programs like this to help us, um, meet the needs of our communities is, um, is a step in the right direction. And, um, us having a voice at the table, uh, you know, just speaking with Dr. Pace, um, that, that is already a step in the direction of mending the relationship that we have with public health, that mending the relationships that we can have with the Board of Supervisors, um, and the county, and the government itself. So I think that, um, I, I see this as a way of not only addressing an issue that is immediate now, but also will have some benefits long-term in, in just, um, relationship building. So, um, I, I just wanted to address that. I, I appreciate that, that, that's even a thought, and not looking at it, just how do we get what we need, the goals of the, the grant met now? But how can we utilize this grant to, um, have a long-term impact and for, for a positive? And I think it's the relationship that we can establish, um, through this. And, and hopefully, you know, my goal is to maintain that relationship and that working relationship. Um, it, it is, it is a, um, federal-to-federal relationship when it comes to tribes, but I think the uniqueness to this grant opportunity is for us to have cultural leaders at the table. Because not always are our tribal leaders in, in the, in a government sense, are our cultural leaders. And so our cultural leaders have just as much influence, oftentimes more, than our, our tribal leaders. And so it's important for our tribal leaders and cultural leaders to be at this, at those tables, getting the same information so that our people can be adequately informed and adequately, um, ready to address these issues that we're facing. Pandemics are nothing new to our communities. Um, we've survived multiple pandemics throughout our, our, our history. And so, um, we're very eager to utilize, um, our culture and Western medicine in bridging those two, to address the issues of today. And so, um, I just wanted to share that and thank the board for the opportunity to, um, be considered for this grant. And, um, we're very excited for not only addressing these, um, very urgent issues today with the pandemic, but utilizing it as a way to mend and begin that, uh, a, a working relationship with county agencies and the Board of Supervisors. So thank you again for your time and for the thought and consideration, um, and the question, Bruno, that you, um, had raised.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate that. I know that, uh, you and I have met before in the past, and I was, uh, pleased to see that, uh, you were, um, the name on the RFP that would be approved today, and, uh, look forward to seeing what kind of work you do for, uh, for all of us. Any other, uh, comments or questions from the board before we open it up for the public? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open it up. We have somebody in the boardroom with their hands raised, so let's start right here.
Joan Moss. I spent, um, a couple of years as a federal Indian education tutor and as, and a state Indian education tutor, and I'd like to know how this, this new organization came about and what its relation is to Lake County Tribal Health Consortium. I'd like to know where I can look and find information about this, and if this gentleman has any information he can give me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little bit uninformed these days, but I'd like to be more informed.
Thank you. Uh, real quick question for Kyle. Is there a website or a place where anybody can find out information about Kanokutai?
Yes, uh, we, uh, KNWI.org is our website. We are a small, um, organization formed on the Elan Indian Colony in Clear Lake Oaks. And, um, we are cultural people that are on our board, and we are, um, our Board of Directors are Native, um, Native American women from the Indian Colony. Jim Brown would also have a lot of information for you two about our organization. But KNWI.org would be the website you can take a look, and you can also contact us to get more specific information if you'd like.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room and see if we have any comments there. Jake, please.
All right. I have sent an unmute request out to the Zoom floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay. Hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for further discussion or action.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion, um, to approve the, uh, agreement between the Lake County Health Services, Kanokutai Native Wellness, Inc., and the Prevention, Detection and Support, the Lake County Initiative for Native American-Focused Outreach for a One-Time Cost of $70,900 and authorize the Board Chair to sign.
Second.
A motion and a second. Joanna, if we can have a roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Um, I don't hear Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
She's right next to me, and she said aye.
Okay. Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Just wanted to check with Ms. Grant, are we good with that, uh, 5-0? Or do you, um, do we need to hear Supervisor Scott's voice? Maybe it was a microphone issue.
I did not hear Supervisor Scott object to you or assist, so I think you're fine.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Ayesha.
Yep, thank you very much for that. And, uh, moving forward, we're actually gonna go backwards. Let's go ahead and, uh, go to item 7.2. Consideration of Chairman's Recommended 2021 Committee Assignments for Members of the Board of Supervisors. So everyone should have, um, been given the time to review these assignments. Any, uh, changes, any questions, any comments from the board on this? Okay, seeing none, I will say, uh, two things prior to moving forward. Uh, I know that it shows on there that I will be replacing, um, Supervisor Crandall, I believe, in the, um, Economic Development Task Force. However, that exchange will occur, uh, I believe, either later this month or early in February in order to allow them to finalize their, uh, quarterly report that's coming back to the board. Uh, that way, I don't become a wrench in a wheel. Uh, it would just be a, but a much better to have the same people who have been working on this report to continue and finalize that. And I see Ms. Hutchinson has her hand up.
Yeah, just to clarify, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the request would be that you allow Supervisor Simon and Crandall to finish, uh, what the task force has, has started in its first quarter. We intend to bring forward the first quarter report to your board, um, at the, uh, the last meeting of this month, which I, which I believe is 26. Yes. And so then, the first day that- And so then the first day that you would join a meeting of the task force would be the 27th, Wednesday, the 27th, if that works for you.
Yes, that works perfectly for me, and it makes perfect sense to do it that way. And then also spoke with Supervisor Pyska about the Small Business Assistance Committee. She was very interested in being on that. I'm interested in continuing to set up the committee to support our businesses to the best as possible, and will possibly relinquish, I'm hoping, by February relinquish my position to Ms. Pyska, who is very energized to do the same job that I've been doing in supporting our small businesses. So I want to make that public so that the public is aware of those upcoming potential changes. And if there's no further comment or questions from the Board, Ms. Hutchinson?
Sorry to be a bother. As you had directed when we were beginning to work on this, we added a column on this list that includes the meeting schedule. And thanks to the input of some of you, we were able to begin to fill that in, but there's still quite a ways to go. And staff would be very happy to connect with Board members about filling in some of the additional information about when these committees meet. So if you have that information and you can pass it to myself or Carolyn Purdy will happily keep adding to this list.
And Ms. Hutchinson, please correct me if I'm wrong. I know that we received some, an interesting email about the level of access and level of transparency on some of these committees. I know that there's internal conversations happening to update our website, to provide better transparency on the agendas and the minutes and who is on each committee, because it's not just supervisors. Sometimes there's a large number of members of the public that are on there, such as the EMT one. And so we are working on, working to enhance our transparency to the public on all of these items. And I appreciate the email that came to us from Betsy Khan.
Yes, we absolutely are updating, and so this would also apply to Agenda Item 7.7 where you're making more appointments to advisory boards. But we have digitized the application process with hope of making it easier for people and working on establishing webpages for these and trying to get more information out there and organized. So as you participate in these, the more you share with us, the better we can do that.
Perfect. Okay, any further comments before I open up for the public?
Yeah, just one last comment to Carol. You know, if there's anything that we're missing, if you can send us a list, you know, it's missing something for, you know, at least myself or anyone else on the Board, send it to us, say, hey, what days is happening? I greatly appreciate it, because we are on quite a few. Knowing which ones you're missing would help out to get those dates and times for you and Carolyn.
Okay, will do. We will follow up with an email to each of you for the assignments you have where we don't know what the meeting schedule is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. I don't see a hand raised in the boardroom, so let's go ahead and get started with the Zoom room. Jake, if you can, please open it up.
All right, I've sent an unmute request out to the Zoom floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the Board, and I believe we're looking for action on this.
Okay, Mr. Chair, one second here. Chair, I make a recommendation to, make a motion to appoint the recommended 2021 committee assignments for members of the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And moving on to item 7.3, Consideration of Letter of Support for Lake County Fairgrounds. So I went ahead and submitted this. This has been a conversation happening for quite a while already at RCRC, Rural Counties Representing California. The fairs have gotten a level of support from the state, but yet it's also been deferred. And so COVID-19 has only been an exacerbation of this issue. And at this moment in time, in speaking with, I believe her name is Shelley Wright, who is running the fairgrounds currently, our fairgrounds are looking that by the end of March, they will have no money left, which means they will have to shut down. And knowing the importance of our fairgrounds, both for our social activities, for our youth activities, just organization activities, and not only that, but also for our emergency purposes, our fairgrounds are crucial to the fabric of Lake County. And if you go to other counties, they have large venues where people could do events, maybe be able to continue to do a fair somewhere else. We don't have such large venues. This is our only one. And to lose our capability where eventually, once we get out of COVID-19, we start doing these social events again, to not have that with us would be, in my opinion, very horrible. And so I've drafted up a letter discussing all the points of why our fairgrounds are important to us and for us to keep them open, both during COVID-19 and otherwise. I've mentioned two financial funds that are available to keep them open. One of them is AB 1499, which was put in by Assembly Member Gray, who asked that 1% of all revenue from the fairgrounds in the state, that 3/4 of 1% be put back out to the fairgrounds from the state. And this was voted in, I believe, in October of 2017. There was some changes in the internal departments of the state, I think going from the, I don't know if it was the Franchise Tax Board to the Tax and Fee Administration, whatever the new title of that department is. But anyways, it was deferred through 2018 to start in 2019. And now by the time that it's begun, the amount that is anticipated to be given to our fairgrounds is almost more than half of what was already anticipated originally. As you see, I've attached a letter from Assembly Member Gray, who is not happy with the way that his bill has been interpreted, feels that it is creating a vacuum of funds that is necessary for all of our fairgrounds throughout the state of California. And also, in the governor's budget, he had set aside, I believe, I'm just kind of winging it here, $41.3 million to help out the fairgrounds during COVID-19. And those funds could only be accessible once you laid off all your staff. I think that a lot of fairgrounds chose to try and wait and wait and wait, and eventually they had to lay off their staff. But so many, such little amount of those funds have been touched to the point that there's about $21 million left over in those funds currently. And I'm asking in the letter, or we would be asking for AB 1499 to be re-reviewed, so not reinterpreted, to allow less money to go to our fairgrounds. And for the remaining $21 million in the governor's January review of his budget, that he allow it greater access so that we can continue to have our fairgrounds, especially during this time of COVID-19, where we've been looking to see if we can do warming centers there, we've been looking to see if we can do other activities, and some of the problems could be a financial issue as well as possibly other issues. So again, you have the letter in front of you and open to discussion and hearing your remarks.
I guess my question would be, I know that the fairgrounds, you know, put out, they'll be out of funds by the end of March, and that would be the trigger to be able to get that funds from the state. Do we know how much money that would be?
So the trigger is only for state employees, and I believe they're already at the point that they're no longer, they no longer have state employees, which means they have been slowly accessing it. But the main fairgrounds itself and all of their utility bills, none of those funds are accessible for that.
Do we know how much they've been receiving?
I do not have those specific numbers.
I'm just curious. No, but I definitely support this letter, and we need to be doing whatever we can to support our fairgrounds.
Yeah, I completely agree that we should be supporting the fairgrounds. I know, I'm not sure, but I know they had a couple of events. They had the Halloween drive-throughs, some other things. So, you know, I know the community showed up for that big time, and yeah, we need to continue to support them, so I agree with the letter.
Any other comments? I see that we have Tom Turner. I believe he is the president of the Fairground Board. But before I turn to him, any other comment from the Board?
No, he can go.
Okay. And wondering if Tom wants to say anything? Jake, is it possible to unmute him?
It looks like he has unmuted. I'm not seeing any activity on the mic there. Tom, can you give us a sound check?
Hello?
Hi, yes, we can hear you.
All right. First of all, I really want to thank Supervisor Sabatier for bringing this to your Board for approval and review. I did, you know, want to make a few points in reference to all of this. And, you know, going back in 2011, state funding for California fairs were cut. So then in 2012, fairs had to become a self-revenue generating source, which of course, you know, having to change their business model and order to create revenues has definitely been quite a project through the years. The fairgrounds here locally, it unfortunately has been blessed by tragedy, and I hate to put it that way, but there's no other way to put it. So some of the financial help through the years has been through emergency events, CAL FIRE, PSP events with PG&E. And so pretty much it's been breaking even on its revenue generating sources through the last few years. And for the fairgrounds not to have mass gathering type events, which is what really produces its main revenue source, has been a major hit. You know, Sabatier had put in a lot of good points. Unfortunately, we haven't had any other economic impact reports, it seems, since 2015, but I do believe it still points out how much of an important aspect the fairgrounds is to our community. You know, not only for emergencies, but also for, you know, educational purposes. We do have an advisory committee, a junior livestock committee that works hand in hand with the Future Farmers of America and the 4H programs to help them on annual auction events that the 49th DA hosts and run with them, as well as many other events. I mean, it's not just coincidence that we have three automotive shops within a few blocks of each other, you know, because we host a lot of racing there, the fairgrounds. I personally cannot imagine having that hole in our community there should the fairgrounds go under. We do look like we are going to run out of funds more to, I think, early spring. It's costing us about, somewhere about $30,000 a month to operate at this time. And, yeah, you know, looking at what the state is doing, it really just might not be enough to keep things going for fairgrounds. The governor's office recently has started pushing for the fairgrounds to become nonprofits in order to change their governance models and take that liability, that financial liability off of the state. I really do appreciate this reach out, and, you know, we need this from all of our community to reach out to the representatives and to our governor's office in this manner. And I really do appreciate you bringing this to your committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. Let's go ahead and continue. Any public comment from the Zoom room?
I've sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. I do see Melissa Fulton popped up here and had raised her hand.
I just have a question as to whether or not the supervisors received a letter that I sent about 6:30 last evening on this topic and the support of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce to whatever efforts you can put forth to assist our Lake County fairgrounds to remain open and functioning. I think it's all our hope that one day, sooner than later, we can return to normal and all of our organizations, from our youth organizations up through our many nonprofit organizations who utilize the fairgrounds every year, will be able to return and exercise their right to put on their fundraisers and all of their community events. So thank you, Supervisor Sabatier, and all of you for pushing this forward. We need the fairgrounds. It supports all of our Lake County communities and the aforementioned organizations. So thank you. And hopefully you did receive my letter, our letter.
And just to let you know, the chamber letter has been attached to the agenda, and yes, it was received.
Thank you.
Any other public comment from Zoom? I take it, Jake, that their unmute possibility is still active at this moment in time?
That is correct.
Okay, so that means we're hearing no further comment. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the Board. I will just say two simple, or a few simple things. One, in paragraph two, I'd like to do a typo change where I missed a word. It says, "It is important as we slowly move towards a resolution, the COVID pandemic." It needs to say "to" the COVID pandemic. Looks like on paragraph three, for some reason, the formatting wasn't correct, where in the middle of it, it starts with agriculture is a great part of our economy. That should be its own paragraph, not embedded in that other paragraph. And I know there was something else, but I couldn't find it. Oh, yes, it's, I made a unfortunate mistake of saying "by annual county fair" when it's just annual county fair. And I don't remember where that is in there. It's... But it's in there. Yeah, I can't seem to find it.
Those fixes, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I just said I will take care of those revisions for you.
Oh, and it is on the second sentence of the second paragraph where it says "by annual county fair," and that should just be annual.
Thank you.
Yep. And then also, it doesn't state, I don't believe specifically who would receive this. I think obviously the governor's office, since it's directed directly to him, but also CDFAs, since they do take care of the funding of our fairgrounds, and then also our other state representatives, Senator McGuire and Assemblywoman Aggie R. Curry.
He put a thumbs up, so that's true.
Yep. Okay. If there's no further conversation, looking for action.
The only thing I would like to add, too, since we have everybody's attention on this matter of the fair, is the Lake County Fair Foundation will be holding a fundraiser The only thing I would like to add too, since we have everybody's attention on this matter of the fair, is the Lake County Fair Foundation will be holding a fundraiser. Um, they're selling tickets on their website. So if you want to support the fair, go ahead and, and get on the Lake County Fair Foundation website and buy tickets. It's going to be a drive-through dinner and, um, online auction.
Awesome. Thank you.
And then I will move to approve the letter, um, the support of our Lake County Fairgrounds.
With the amendments?
With, with the amendments.
Okay. Do we have a second?
One second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Johanna, roll call please.
Hey Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Uh, so right now it is 12:42. We have one, two, three items left because we still need the one from our consent agenda that was pulled, uh, as well as our weekly calendars. Is everyone, uh, willing to power through and get this done or is anyone looking for lunch? I want to pull the board.
I'm fine with finishing.
Jake's got his monster, so he's good. Okay. And I'm also asking staff, not just the board, as, uh, staff needs to remain as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the important question with staff. You know, obviously I know we're always looking to push through, but, um, just wanted to bring it up.
Could, could we just take a brief break to, so I can confer with staff, like just a 30-second break?
Yep.
Thank you.
Actually, let's go through our calendars, uh, while they do that break. That way that'll take care of one of our items. Supervisor Simon, would you like to get started?
Oh, yeah. Yep, give me one second here. Apologize. Okay, obviously board meeting today, uh, Wednesday. Um, there's a search planning call tomorrow afternoon. I've been attending those. Gonna make sure to have that. Thursday morning, have the EOC call. And then, um, Friday have the, uh, class and comp. I think there's a class and comp study on Friday, uh, the 8th. Um, don't have anything on 9th or 10th. Uh, have meeting on Monday with, uh, Carol and also the COVID recovery, uh, work group. Don't think I've missed anything. Um, I think that'll be it and back here for next Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
Tomorrow I have an 8:00 AM pit count meeting, trying to organize for the pit count coming up the end of, um, this month. On, on Thursday, I have a 3:00 PM COC meeting. And then I'm, um, that afternoon I'm also doing, will be doing the human trafficking training online. On Friday, the 8th, I have the, the, the study, uh, CCRR with, uh, review with Supervisor Simon. And on Monday, I have a 9:30 Hope Rising. I think it's Executive Committee meeting. I'm back here on Tuesday.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Pyska?
Yes, um, tomorrow at 8:30, I have the TID meeting. And then in the afternoon, I'm meeting with, um, Carol with the supervisor orientation meeting. And then I have my cavern radio check-in, which is every Wednesday night. Thursday morning is the EOC call. Friday, in the evening, I'm meeting with One Team One Dream. And Monday, I have a meeting with Carol, a reopening committee meeting for Middletown Unified School District and, I don't think I have to go to that other one. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Crandall?
So, thank you. Um, so today if, uh, we get, we get finished in time at 2:00 PM, I'll be, uh, going to a meeting, uh, with, uh, New Paradigm College. They're having a discussion about, uh, water, something to do with water. I know that. Um, and so, uh, I'll be meeting with them if I can make that, uh, tomorrow morning. Uh, I'm not sure if I, I think, I think it's either Jessica or myself in the TID, so if she's attending, then I probably won't attend that. Um, then I have, uh, I know I have a CSA meeting and, and that's with Spring Valley. They're CSA number two. Um, for some reason I have something listed as, uh, Into the Future on Friday. Uh, and I think that has to do with the, like a group that just wants to meet with me about some, uh, some things in the community. Um, Monday, COVID recovery. I'm not sure how that works. Did we switch that out? Am I on that still? COVID recovery or is that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd still be doing that, uh, meeting with Carol after that, uh, later on in the afternoon. Uh, yesterday, we had a series of meetings that we conducted, our economic development meeting, uh, that you discussed earlier and you kind of went over the, the, the resources that, um, the people can look towards. Um, and then also we conducted the Middle Creek Restoration Meeting, which we'll be pushing through as much as we can this year. Um, we'd switched out, uh, officers. So now, um, you've allowed me to be the chair now and, uh, uh, we have some things we're working on to, with, uh, Paragon and, uh, Paragon is no longer, it's Monument now that we're working with. So we're trying to get as many properties, um, in the hopper as we can to get that project moving forward. Um, and so we're just waiting for duck season to kind of tail away so we can get some, some appraisals done, uh, accurately and move forward from there. So, uh, all right. That's what I have so far.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, so the rest of the day for me is pretty wide open. Going to meet with some department heads, just check in since it's the beginning of the year. Uh, if I am lucky, I'll be able to get a couch out of our supervisor, um, offices and back to its owner. Uh, then on Wednesday, uh, it looks like I got nothing set up for Wednesday at this moment in time. Uh, starting the Thursday off with the EOC meeting, a CSAC phone call and then a City of Clear Lake Council meeting in the evening. On Friday, uh, at this moment, I seem to be clear. And then coming back again next week, meeting with Carol. Uh, I don't have the recovery meeting on my, uh, calendar, but I guess I should put that on there. And, uh, CSAC phone call and also a pegboard meeting, uh, starting on, at 6:00 PM and then back here on Tuesday for our meeting. Um, I, I do want to just add a little bit as well, the Middle Creek project, um, with, uh, we have two contracts right now. One is finishing up the original, uh, four properties that needed to go through. Uh, and then we are starting a new contract, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors not too long ago, uh, in December, I think mid-December, uh, where the rest of the 46 properties, uh, will be appraised and hopefully, uh, acquired so that we can go ahead and move forward with the project. We do have a deadline to spend all of our money, uh, that we've received from the State Department of Water Resources, uh, by, I believe, March of 2022. That deadline is approaching very quickly. And so we did discuss about, um, what type of outreach we might need in order to look at getting a, uh, extension for the use of that money because the, um, appraisal process can be quite, uh, uh, time-consuming to go through. And so that's, um, my report. I've already reported on our, uh, small count, uh, small business, uh, meetings that we had. And, um, yeah, so that'll do it for that item. And I did get a message from Ms. Hutchinson that staff is prepared to power through. So let's go ahead and see if we can get this accomplished. Um, next item is 7.4, consideration of temporarily closing the Board of Supervisors' chambers for in-person meetings. And this is sponsored by Supervisor Simon.
Yep. Thank you very much Supervisor Sabatier. You know, uh, earlier on during the pandemic, obviously I, I brought this issue to, to the board. Um, at, at that time, in, in June, I think we decided to keep the board chambers open. It felt like, um, and especially after hearing Dr. Pace's report today, in the direction we're moving in over the next, you know, eight weeks or so, that I would just like to have a conversation with the board about closing the board chambers, uh, here in the office. And the reason is, obviously, you know, instead of you assume around 100 people, that, uh, probably anywhere between 10 to 20 people potentially have the virus. And I know we're bringing folks into the chambers to sit there for hours, uh, whether they're masked or not. I'm glad to see or hear today that everyone was masked up. But I felt like it was an issue that needed to be brought back to the board to discuss one more time at this time. Um, you know, where we are in the pandemic. Um, I appreciate the conversation. We'll go either way, but I felt like this was an issue, uh, that we did need to address to kind of set the example, uh, here at the board level, um, for our community and, and other businesses here in Lake County. So, I brought it to the board. You guys saw the memo. It was written. Liked it to be reevaluated on a weekly basis, but giving us an opportunity to protect not only our community, but also our workforce that works here, uh, in the courthouse. And I know other departments, uh, even the courts have at this point suspended some of the things that they're doing, uh, here in our building. And we have had some opportunities, uh, for the virus to get in and have a few outbreaks, uh, you know, in the offices here in the county. Um, so i- in the courthouse. So, I just would like to, uh, have this conversation with the entire board at this point.
Thank you very much Supervisor Simon. Any comments or questions from the board?
I guess my only question or comment would be, I was pleased to see today when I came in that everybody was masked. But I know, um, in recent board meetings, um, there was many people that weren't masked that were in this building. Um, what are we, what are we doing about that? I mean, are we just allowing them to come in unmasked? Are we, is there any sort of protocol that we have in place to protect the, the, our staff that are in here or the ones that are being masked? I mean, that would be my only concern if we were to stay open. What are we doing about that?
I think, you know, I can't talk for, for Dr. Pace, but I know the, the state recommendations, obviously if there is a medical condition or if you have, uh, you, you know, you can say, "Well, I have a condition," I, you know, or an exemption, uh, where I don't have to wear a mask. So, we know there's not a, a mandate for everyone to wear the mask. We know that, uh, you know, we've dealt with that and had that conversation here at the board multiple times. And even some of the protocols we put into place, we needed to address those. Uh, because ultimately we don't have a security force, uh, that could be monitoring the halls, uh, constantly once someone comes through the security gate. So, I know those are some of the conversations we've had, um, right here, you know, on this diocese. So, I, I don't have all the answers, but I know that's what we've been experiencing for the past, well, since March, uh, 17th or so.
Well, couldn't be to the fact that, I, I thought people that came in unmasked, you had to give them another way to access whatever business or whatever you're doing. Couldn't be, couldn't that be the fact that they can get online and be unmasked and not allow them into our chambers? Because we, they have another way to access our, our meetings? Or is that not something that we would be able to do?
I, I, I would be worried that that might, um, carry us over the line of, uh, possibly treating people differently, uh, especially if they don't have access to the internet and we're saying no to you with a mask and, or you to, without a mask, um, and yes to you with a mask. It's, uh, I, I would suggest that, while I have my own opinion, I, it's either we close for all or open for all. And, and I think that would be the safest way to go about it, to make sure that we don't get ourselves in any kind of, uh, hot water. And I see Ms. Hutchinson has her hand up and waiting patiently.
So, the difficulty is, um, you know, once people are in the building, there's, there's no way to follow them around to see if people are going to comply. The security guards, which as you know, work through the courts, um, are requiring masks as people enter. They have masks, a supply of masks if people don't have, but it seems like the general public has masks now. We're kind of past that point where we need to provide masks. Um, but once somebody walks in, you know, I, I don't know what you can do to make sure they stay masked. And, um, and so, so it's a complicated issue. There's, there's no doubt about it. Um, you know, and, and the point that the chairman just made about, um, being entirely open or entirely closed, you know, is a well-taken point and likely to come up, um, a little later today when, actually it's the next item, when you talk about the COVID protocol. Because your department heads are also asking questions about, uh, are there any conversations happening at the board level about whether or not, um, county offices are going to stay open to in-person services? Um, there are just a lot of concerns given the, the growing number of cases. But the nature of the board room, the, you know, even with the remodeling, it does invite a crowd. And, and no air filtration system is perfect. The air is recirculated in the building. It does, it goes through filtration, but that filtration is not the type of filtration that, um, would eliminate a virus. Um, and, and these meetings sometimes go for extended periods of time. Today, for example, so, so some of you are in there breathing air that's recirculating. And yes, you're in your, um, you're in your cubicles or whatever we'll call them, behind your shields, but the shield doesn't stop the movement of air pushed by the heating and, and air conditioning system. So, um, it is a growing concern to everyone. But again Supervisor, our chairman, um, Sabatier's point about, you know, closing the board chambers versus closing county offices is, is also well-taken.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Grant?
From a legal perspective, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be an all or nothing. A number of jurisdictions are finding other ways to accommodate that don't require, uh, people to personally have electronic means. You do have now with potentially this, uh, additional strain, the possibility of airborne, which makes a lot of, a lot of choices a little bit more difficult to make. Uh, if at any time your board would be interested in seeing how other counties, for example, are grappling with this, I'm happy to provide that information. We all, as a group, talk about those things quite regularly.
Appreciate that. Any other comments?
I do. Um, I think that temporarily closing the chamber is a relatively easy way to reduce the impact on staff that need to be here. And if we want to keep the offices open for the services that are necessary, this is a step that we should take to protect them.
Okay. Any other comments?
And I just, uh, I just think also about, because we've covered pretty much a lot. Uh, one of the things that I'm concerned about is if we do, let's say we do decide to at least allow people to still come here, um, is, if we are not here, so let's say for, for example, we all do these meetings remote, do people, will they still be coming here and giving public input here if they don't have access to, uh, computers or, or being able to, uh, access the meeting in that forum? Would they still come here? Is, is Sam still going to be here? You know, see, I'm just trying to work out those.
My, my guess would be that if there was a closure, it would be close to the public, uh, to come into the board chambers. I think Sam would still be here to work and function the, uh, needs and requirements for the Zoom meeting to still be accomplished, uh, properly. Uh, for the public, uh, to see it on all the different medias that we, uh, push it on to. I, I'm guessing that that, that would be the case.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Sam would need to be in there to produce the meeting, but the public would not be in there.
Right.
Okay. I, I'm fine with closing if need be. I know we did that in the beginning, uh, when we started this, uh, pandemic. It worked pretty well for us, if you noticed our numbers back then. Uh, we stayed really low for quite some time and, in the light of this new strand and situation, I have no problem doing so and then readdressing it each week or bi-weekly or whatever the case may be. So.
So, I, I, I'm, I feel very comfortable in coming to the courthouse and in coming into the board chambers. Um, I would say on average, at the, on average, there's maybe three people i- in the board chambers other than supervisors. Uh, I'm talking just the public because we need to be concerned equally about anybody that would be in the room and that includes Sam as well. Um, and I think on average, there's about three people here. Everybody is social distancing very well. Yes, there's times where there's people who, uh, do come here and they do not have masks, but at the same time, they, they seem to keep their distance much further than just six feet. Typically, they're all the way in the back, uh, far away from anyone else. Um, I think that there does come, uh, a- anything we do comes with a risk. And, and obviously that's what we're discussing here is, is it a needed risk? And in my opinion, since this is a public meeting, I know that, for instance, we have one, um, public member who's here who has trouble accessing, uh, the meeting via digital, uh, means. I also know that there was another gentleman that was here earlier. I've had meetings with him, um, over Zoom, uh, from his home and it- I've had meetings with him over Zoom from his home, and it is a very skewed way of listening and watching a meeting because of the access to the internet from, from his house in that area. And so I think that I, I would be even willing to say, we can set an example of saying that six feet is not enough and get rid of an additional eight chairs because they never fill up anyways. And now we have a 12-foot distance separation between seats in order to ensure that everyone has equal access to our meetings, to be able to submit to us their comments and follow what decisions are being made by this board. I, I feel very adamant about access. And we all know that access is not equal across the board, all over our communities when it comes to digital media.
So an option for that would be, could we set up a monitor outside during board meeting days under the overhang with somebody there? Because this is an airborne virus, and the longer people that are in the room together, the higher chance it is in the system infecting the building. So to provide access for people that don't have any other access, we could just have a monitor outside and they could call in using the Zoom number if they need to.
Yeah, and I think, you know, what we've noticed, you know, you can call in on the Zoom. You don't need to actually do the Zoom. You can use your phone or cell phone to call into the Zoom to, to listen. I think access is something we can be very proud of here in Lake County. You know, even received a state award for the hybrid meeting that was put together by the board staff. And, you know, the participation has been unbelievable since pandemic had started. I do bring this up in just, you know, sitting here and listening to our public health officer and the stages that we're in right now. I know I brought it up in the conversation before, and you're, you know, the, the surge we were thinking was going to happen did not happen. We were having serious, you know, conversations today about where we're at and what position Lake County could be in. Hopefully, it won't be in. And our health department is doing a great job of working through all the search planning and other opportunities to look at down the road if it does get in a worst-case scenario. But I think this is one small thing we could do as a board for closing the chambers for a while to help support the, you know, the fight against this pandemic at this point. And working with our individual members, if someone doesn't have that access, try and do the best we can. But I think what we've proven is this hybrid meeting does work, there are opportunities, and I think it's important that we have this discussion and hopefully a decision to do it, to protect not only our workforce, but ultimately the community members too, that are taking that risk to come here and to congregate in the chambers.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from the board before we open it up for the public? Seeing none, we have a member of the public here with their hand raised, so we'll start in the boardroom.
Joan Moss, I of course hope that you still have open access to the public. I don't get internet access at home, even to my cell phone. I have a home phone. I intend to get a laptop and learn how to do virtual meetings quite soon. I have a number of groups I want to join. But for the meantime, I think public access is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, let's go ahead and see if we have any public comments on the Zoom room?
All right, I've sent a mute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
This is Betsy Con.
Go for it, Betsy.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the fact, I, I think that all of you guys are trying to come up with some good suggestions. I, I am perfectly happy to be able to access everything through the remote media. I so appreciate being able to even do this today with you all. There are a few occasions on which physical access to records is unavoidable, the necessity for that physical access. And in this particular case, not that I'm going to rush right down to the courthouse tomorrow to try to do this because I haven't done it yet for 20 years, but in the particular case where we're looking at the boards, committees, and commissions created by the Board of Supervisors and the public record that is, includes their enabling resolutions, all of their applicants, all of their correspondence with outside agencies. Sometimes we have to correspond with the state of California, for example. All of that is in a public historical record that would be of great benefit to people who want to understand how our civic system has evolved here. It's one of my favorite topics, as you probably all understand. The MADDI Act is very near and dear to my heart. Encouraging people to become involved in public participation opportunities like this is essential. So how you, how you work out all that, I do not know, but I do appreciate the fact that we want to keep our, our, everybody in our community as safe as possible. So thank you all very much for your consideration of these, of these very important matters.
Thank you, Betsy. Any other comment from the Zoom room? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for further deliberation or action.
Give me one second, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I would just like to say, this is a tough one for me because I, I agree. We need to have, the public needs to have access to our meetings, and, and I fear that some need to, to be here to have that access. But at what sacrifice are we going to sacrifice? The health of our staff to make that happen? So this is definitely not an, an easy decision either way.
All right. If there's no more, Mr. Chair, if it's time, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Go for it.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for a temporary closing of the Board of Supervisors' chambers for in-person meetings and to be reviewed on a weekly basis.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and I, I do want to say I appreciate the review on a weekly basis. Ms. Hutchinson, before we vote, you have your hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to add that, it would be my recommendation if this motion passes, that that weekly review be a part of the weekly agenda review process. So as each agenda is set for the following Tuesday, that determination is made or have conditions changed sufficiently to warrant reopening the building. And so, and so when board members vote on that, it would be great if they had that understanding, knowing that the agenda review team, which is led by the chair, would make that decision on a weekly basis.
I, yeah, yeah, I'm willing to.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you're making a decision as to whether to open or close the board meeting now in open session, continuing it should be an open session item. Now, if the, if the, if what Ms. Hutchinson means is that the agenda review group makes a recommendation to the board once a week, that's a different matter. But the actual action is going to have to take place in open session each time it comes up for review. It's an action.
That's very doable. It would mean that there would be a one-week delay because we'd put it on the, on the upcoming agenda to reopen the following week if the board took that action. Does that make sense?
No, that makes sense to me. If we make a decision here as a board, we need to make a decision to change it as a board as well. So we have a-
If it's just a regular agenda item, it could just be taken up every Tuesday. But however you'd like to do it, it does need to be an action item.
Okay, appreciate that, Ms. Grant. And go ahead Supervisor Pyska. And again, this is a conversation with a motion on the floor.
Right, and I, I just wanted to add that if we did agree to this, could we have an option to have a screen or a monitor outside?
Mr. Chair?
Or in the window.
Yes, Ms. Grant.
I would suggest, since this is closing the board chambers, but certainly not the courthouse, that direction be given to staff to look to see what kind of accommodations that may be viable. It may not be that there are any beyond what's already been done, but it would be an advisable exercise to determine if there are such accommodations that could be made.
And I would absolutely commit to looking into what is possible. I tend to lean towards the outside suggestion that Supervisor Pyska is making, given the airflow issues in an old building. But, but yes, we can absolutely see what is possible and how we might secure a TV somewhere.
And I think Sam's already kind of looking.
He's got ideas.
He's already figuring it out.
Okay, so let's go ahead and Johanna, let's do a roll call on this motion.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Nay.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay. Okay, motion passes. And so next week, we will be on Zoom only. And, and I would say go ahead and speak with the administrative office to see what suggestions or options might be available for you if you find yourself struggling to connect to our Zoom meeting.
And you can always reach out to your supervisor also, but don't reach out to your supervisor when the meeting's going because that's really difficult. We don't get those usually till after the meeting.
Yeah, that is a little bit of a difficulty. All right, thank you very much for that conversation. We're going to move on to item 7.5, a little similar. Part A, consideration of amendment to the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Work Site Protection Protocol. And B, consideration of request to form a board ad hoc committee to work with department heads regarding this protocol. Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pam Samak, our HR director, is going to join me for this presentation too. We want to make sure she can come off mute. Jake, please.
Yeah, I'll get her all set up here.
Okay, it looks like she's off mute now. Do you have audio, Pam?
Yes. Good afternoon, Board.
Great. So Pam will probably present the bulk of this. I'm just going to kind of outline it. As you know, we've been bringing this protocol back to you every month, or sometimes more often than that, since it was first adopted back in May. This was what enabled us to come back into our buildings following the early spring closure. And the concerns in our departments are just continuing to mount, and we're getting more and more questions. And so what we've done with this revision today is we've added a, a pretty extensive FAQ section based on some discussions we've had with the department heads, and we've added some additional requirements of Cal OSHA where we have to meet certain obligations. So Pam will go through those for you in just a moment. But the questions are continuing to mount. And so the second portion of this agenda item is that I'm asking that your board can consider forming an ad hoc committee of two of you that would work with me and the department heads regarding this protocol. Because these are challenging times to figure out how to best manage staff and, and keep them safe. And so Pam, if you'd go ahead and present the changes and additions today, then we can kind of come back to that discussion and some of the issues that are still coming up and aren't resolved in these documents at this point.
Sure. We recently updated the protocol to reflect recent changes recommended by the CDC, the California Department of Health, and OSHA, specifically reducing the quarantine period from 14 to 10 days and updating the definition of close contact, which is now cumulative 15 minutes over a 24-hour period. In addition, we worked with the Health Department and Risk Management to develop a management FAQ, a COVID investigation form, and the COVID exposure notification template to comply with new laws and to help guide our management team with this ever-changing COVID compliance. Thank you.
So we noticed after we put this together that we, on the document, which I'm going to do a quick share screen, we missed, on the last page of the document, there are a couple of additional places where we need to change 14 days to 10. And so I'd like to show you those. That's what we would be requesting that you approve. So here in number six, where it says the, an exposed employee quarantines for up to 14 days, we would change that to 10. Here, the quarantining employee cannot come back prior to quarantining for 10 days, so that would also change. And down here, there are some more uses of the 14 days. In two cases, they are accurate, but in this one, this should also be 10. And Pam, could you explain the distinction there where 14 days still applies as opposed to 10?
Sure. It's if you've had symptoms in 14 days, then you would have to quarantine for 10, and that's the difference. We look at a 14-day period, but you're only obligated at this point to quarantine for 10.
Okay. I, I must say that the if yes portion reads somewhat confusing. If yes, reschedule after a 14-day period after a 14-day period has passed.
Yes, that is a typo. We also realize that, that that sort of says the same thing twice. Sorry, I did not point that out, but that needs to go away.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and so right now, we're focused on item A. Any comments from the board or questions about item A? And I can't see everybody, so speak up if you have something to say.
No questions.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments on the changes to our workplace protocol? Seeing none in the boardroom, Jake, can we open up the Zoom room, please?
Right, I have sent a mute request out to the Zoom room four. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board, and let's take action on this and then move on to item B.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the amendments to Lake County COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Work Site Protection Protocol, subject to ongoing 30-day reviews with revisions.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Johanna, roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, thank you very much. And then B, consideration of request to form a board ad hoc committee to work with department heads regarding this protocol. Ms. Hutchinson.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So as I said, there are, there are continuing questions coming up. There are different viewpoints about how best to manage this. There are occasions where we're still hearing about county employees unmasked in our facilities at times. Just, just in the last couple of days, questions have arisen from department heads about whether or not we should continue to have break rooms open. You probably heard there was some talk about that in the media over the weekend. And the question I raised earlier when you were discussing item 7.4 is whether or not county offices would remain open and whether or not we should include a directive to limit the movement of employees in our facilities. For example, limiting your movement to your own work area and the restrooms as opposed to going into other departments or offices where, you know, just the mixing up of it is ill-advised right now. So I just throw those out as examples of the kind of questions that are coming up. And if a committee of your board could work with me and the department heads to continuously address those and bring them back in, with changes to this protocol or any other way you would like to implement policy, I think that would be really helpful at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions?
Just, I would like to work on this committee if you haven't already thought of two other supervisors.
Okay. Anyone else?
You know, I'd, I'd be interested also, you know, if no one else has already been talked to about it. But yes, I'd be willing to get on the committee.
Okay, appreciate the, appreciate the offers. All right, no further comments. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public for their comments and none in the boardroom here for this item. So let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room, please Jake.
All right, I have sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room four. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
All right, hearing none. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board of supervisors. I will say this, that in my opinion, the stores that I see where customers are doing a good job of following the guidelines provided to them are where the employees and the owners and management are following those rules to a T. When you see someone behaving a certain way, you're going to feel that that's what's expected of you as well. And I think that we need in every aspect of our county staff, our county departments to exhibit the example that we're asking others to also follow in order to keep us as safe as possible. Nothing is 100%, but it helps and, and this is what we should be trying our best to show off to the public and let them see what, what is expected of them. I have, we have two volunteers that are offering to be on this committee. I'd be happy to accept that. Do we have any other volunteers that wanted to be on this committee also? Just wanted to make sure and ask that question. Okay, so it looks like Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Scott are happy to represent us in those meetings and that subcommittee. And do we have a motion to make that happen?
I will move to appoint Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Scott to that ad hoc committee.
Have a motion and a second. Johanna, if we can get a roll call, please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pesca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye. Thank you very much for volunteering. Okay, now we're going to move on and I'm sorry, I thought we were done at 7.6. I forgot there was a big gap in the agenda. Moving on to item 7.7 for consideration of the following advisory board appointments. Animal Control Advisory Board, Emergency Medical Care Committee, Glenbrook Cemetery District, Hartley Cemetery District, Kelseyville Cemetery District, Lake County Public Authority Advisory Committee, Lake County Resource Conservation District, Lucerne Area Town Hall, Maternal Child and Adolescent Health, Spring Valley CSA Number Two Advisory Board. And so is there any discussions about those whose applications we have on file? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open up to the public for any comments they may have for our consideration in front of us. And seeing none in the board chambers, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room, please Jake.
All right, I have sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room four. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and come back to the board and let's go ahead and, what's the easiest way, just doing one at a time?
Mr. Chair, I think Carol has her hand up.
Sorry, I wasn't looking at the Zoom room.
Sorry to bother you, Mr. Chair. I, at some point before you complete this item, I would appreciate being able to show you what Johanna created working with the support of IT for, for improved access to advisory boards. And in fact, it might even be helpful as you take up the applications for each group to look at who you have on there now. So would you allow me to do a share screen?
I think that's perfect timing.
Okay, let me get it going here. So I'm on the county website, under county government, boards and commissions. So this is where I've landed. And if you come down here to vacancy and application, and then you've got all the, the list of all of them. So to view the board vacancies, this is what Johanna just worked with IT to have posted. You can click on a spreadsheet and it will take you in a minute to each of your committees and who is presently on them and where your vacancies are. So we're really pleased to be able to give this information out there. It should make it more clear to people who are interested in serving where there are openings. And so I'll leave that up for a minute. If you want to go through each grouping and, and look at who is on each one as you make additional appointments, we can do that. But we also automated the application. And so I just clicked on a link from that same boards and commission page and IT created this fillable PDF that when somebody completes, completes this and hits the submit button, Johanna, does it come to you or does it come to other staff in the administrative office?
It just comes to me.
Okay. And so then Johanna works to get them on the next available agenda. So a few improvements that, that we hope will work better for the public.
I appreciate the demonstration on that. I think that's a great addition.
Most definitely. I, I love the fact that we're moving in the direction of being paperless and having that automation. We should have been there a long time ago, so it's, it's great that we're going that direction.
We've, we've been forced and we like it. So the first group that you've got, the first group of applications are for folks that are applying for the Animal Control Advisory Board. And so here it is, right here. And you'll see that you have three vacancies and what the terms of those are. Is this a font that you can see well enough or should I enlarge it?
I can see it.
I can see it well.
Okay.
But that's okay.
So if you wanted to take them up group at a time, that, or however you wish.
So I do know that there are no groups where there are more applicants than there are positions. So I would suggest that unless there is someone that will not be approved, that we go ahead and take that up separately or else if everyone approves of the public at large or all other members that are either district representatives or anything like that, if everyone approves, that we go ahead and look at it as a one single swift motion.
Okay. So then shall I go to the next grouping, which would be the?
Yeah, let's go ahead and take a look at the groups, each one, just to see how they are populated at the moment.
So the EMCC spans two pages, but you can see where your vacancies are. You can see who's serving already. And after you've looked at that for a minute, I'll flip it to the second page. And so then here's the second page. Obviously, your board just took action for your own seat at this table. That, you see Rob Brown there, that will, that will change the next time we amend this, which will be right away. And so next is the Glenbrook Cemetery District. These are full, so these are all appointments for reap, reapportment, I should say. Barnes and Dorner. Next is Hartley, right below it, and Ms. Kemp asking for reapportment. IHSS, you have one person, Taylor, asking to be reappointed. You see that he's already, lots of vacancies there. Kelseyville Cemetery District. Just one vacancy. So it looks like you have one new application. Let's see. One new and one reapportment. And Lucerne Area Town Hall. I may have printed the agenda before some more were uploaded for this group. And so the agenda I printed that I'm working from today had two. Supervisor Crandall, can you fill in who all the applications are from for your Lucerne Area Town Hall?
You mean the new ones, the ones that have been submitted? So the applicants are Jason Mahone, Kevin Wasick, Mahilani Urkusa, Loretta Krentz and Andrew Peterson.
Okay, so some changes there and they would all have two-year terms.
Real quick, I'm going to interrupt you. I'm confused by the Kelseyville Cemetery District because on our memo, it says there's four vacancies and then there's four applications and one is, two of them are reapportments. But there's only showing one vacancy. Did one other person resign that just isn't updated in this listing? Because we would be approving of two new appointments at this point.
So this would be a vacant, excuse me, the yellow one obviously. And then these two, oh wait, those do go for a whole other year, huh? No, wait, they are, they are, these two are up now, the two January 2021 are empty or while needing reapportment. And Johanna, do you know anything about the other two slots?
I don't. There was some confusion with the cemetery districts on just who was leaving and who was coming in, but those are the ones that we received.
So there is a Robert Ranker on our memo and there's Bob Ranker and it looks like his day of term of expiration was January 1st, 2023.
Yes.
He's being seen as a new appointment for general membership. So that seems like that'll work out.
He was not to reapply.
It looks like he reapplied without needing to and that's what that one is.
And so then that would, I'm sure I do crap this, Mr. Chair, because then that would clarify that the two that are expiring now, just expired, are asking to be reappointed and then you have one new one to fill the vacancy.
Okay.
And so then Supervisor Crandall clarified Lucerne Town Hall. Johanna, are the community service districts on here? Maybe not, because it's a little different than a board committee.
That is all I have on this spreadsheet. I need to update it when we approve all of the ones today. I will go in and look at all the other ones we have and try making this a little better.
Well, it's, it's such a great start. We appreciate the work. And so I can't show you the current situation for CSA two. How about RCB, the Resource Conservation District?
Yeah, it was there.
Is there another word that goes with it?
Yeah, Lake County.
Lake County, okay.
Excuse me, just for point of information, the community service districts are, are populated by the board. Do they have separate advisory committees now?
No, I think this just got tossed into advisory committees and shouldn't be.
Okay.
So, so when the board takes action, it should not include those?
No, because the, the board sits as CSAs, the board members for CSAs. Those are essentially dependent special districts as opposed to like air quality or some of the other districts where they're independent, but the board still sits as the body.
Thank you. And so for the RCD, there is one new application and it must be intended for the vacant slot you see there. For the Upper Lake Cemetery District, Mrs. Veristanos is asking to be reappointed. She is the only one that is, has expired just now. And then for MC, maternal child and adolescent here. Lots of applications, many of which are reapportments. Two, three vacancies. So the ones that appear new are Carol Lee Martin. That is an application to be newly appointed. Kimberly Tangeman is already on it, asking to be reappointed, as is Helene Moore and Daphne Collation. April GM Briya is also asking to be reappointed, as is Carla Ritz.
So does that mean that they don't have a quorum at this point? If there's only five of them, because they're all expiring?
It would appear that they may have a quorum problem. Is this one you attend Supervisor Scott?
Yes, I do have a conflict with another meeting, but I do try to attend these. But I don't think they've ever had an issue with not continuing the meeting because not having a quorum.
So they have 10 slots and one, two, three, four, five, six applicants. So.
Five, five applicants.
Oh, thank, oh, excuse me, yes, I skipped down because we have an EMCC one out of order. So, so the EMCC one should be considered with the others that, and that's a sizable group with a lot of vacancies that you were looking at earlier. So, so we're definitely making improvements here. I hope you have appreciated it. We'll continue to refine it, but what needs to happen at this point is for the Kelseyville Cemetery District, the only application you would consider are the three not including Robert Ranker. He is, as you notice, he is good through 2023. And the CSA two applications for Smith and Wells need to be pulled entirely.
Okay. And so we already went through public comment, but we did show something new. So I'm just going to reopen public comment real quick. Not seeing anything here in the boardroom, so reopening it up in the Zoom room. Jake, if you can help out?
All right, yes, the, I sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room four. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
This is Betsy Khan.
Go for it, Betsy.
Thank you. There are two, two committees. I don't think I could keep track of everything you were saying. I love this piece of work. I cannot thank you all enough for doing this. For the IHSS Advisory Committee, it looked to me like there was only one applicant for renewing their membership, and that was Mr. Taylor. But it also looked, as I recall, as though all the other members were their, their terms were expiring as well. And maybe I didn't catch that correctly, but yeah, so 10, 1021 was Kathleen Carlson and also Kim Munson. Did they not reapply?
So it looks like there's one that will remain until 2022. And the rest at, at this moment in time, unless Johanna has anything different to say, it would appear that we didn't receive any applications thus far to make it for this meeting at least.
So, so basically you would have two members at this, at the next meeting, right? Two approved.
It would, it would appear so.
Yeah, so, so something, I, I would suggest that something really needs to be done to help that group of people. The IHSS workers and registered clients and the Department of Social Services, all of the different agencies that intersect with the care of those individuals is a subject that is of great concern to many different civic bodies as well as the senior centers and a whole bunch of folks. I'm sure y'all are aware of this. So having that advisory council, it, it looks just like it's kind of been abandoned and somehow. I don't know what to suggest, but I would really ask that you guys, somebody take that up, become a mom of that. See what we can do to help, help invigorate that. The IHSS workers are so incredibly important to our community.
So that's just one. The other one is the Fire Safe Council. Is the Fire Safe Council in that list as well? Sorry, I had to close it because I couldn't find my mute button when I was sharing. Sorry. That's why I was struggling a little. And no, the Fire Safe Council is, is not here. I don't, does the board appoint that? I don't believe so. Well, see, this is, this is the subject, and I won't belabor that at this time because I know you guys got really important work to do. But I'll, I'll write to you about this, Carol, and, and explain where we're at, trying to figure out the, the broken parts of that system, because we're aware of some, some fractures in this, in this process. But thanks an awful lot for this. It's very helpful. And we'll continue to refine it and make it better. Really fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Any other comment from the public in the Zoom room?
Johanna has a comment. Carolyn's informing me that we should reappoint one of the, who is it? It is Robert Ranker to the Kelseyville Cemetery District because the information on the spreadsheet might not be right. And she had a discussion with Joan from the Cemetery District about it.
Okay, so we are on the side of caution and reappoint Robert Ranker, and if his term is good till 1/23, so be it. And if not, we've got him covered. Is that what you're recommending?
Yes.
He'll be serving two terms at once? Okay, so we're looking at.
Fill a slot on the IHSS committee if he's going to serve multiple terms.
And so we're looking at only now eliminating the Spring Valley CSA number two?
Yes.
Okay. And any further comments? Last call? Okay, let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint qualified applicants to the specified advisory boards, removing Spring Valley CSA number two advisory board.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and the second came originally from Supervisor Crandall. And let's go ahead with a roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabate?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Thank you very much for the conversation and exciting to see us moving in that direction of, of being much more transparent, and we can get that access and information as well, which is useful.
Chair Sabate?
Yes.
Just to add, one of the folks that served on the Lucerne Town Hall had mentioned that we were having issues, and I've been trying to work with, with them as well. And what we'll be working on too is trying to get the minutes for the town hall's agendas on the actual website that Cao Hutchinson was putting up too. So I'll be working with, with, for my committees on that aspect as well, because this person made a very, very good point, so.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Okay, we're going to move on to item 7.8, Discussion of Changes to State Management Standards for Treated Wood Waste and Direction to Staff for Future Efforts. And wondering if Director Ewing is available? There he is.
I am, thank you. Large Ewing, Public Services Director. I appreciate the chance to update the board on this. It is an informational item with, with possible direction to staff, and I, I felt it was important for the board to be aware of some, some changes to, basically to state law, I guess is a simple way to put it. I'm going to start, I'll try to hit the highlights here so we can, we can get through to, to direction to staff. But the background on this, kind of first, what is treated wood and what is treated wood waste? I also asked, and I, I see he's on Craig Weatherby, the County Environmental Health Director is on, so he can, he can touch on, on the enforcement side. Effectively, he's, he's the, they are the agency that acts on behalf of DTSC to, to enforce these hazardous waste laws. So he can, he can talk to that point. So I'll go through my memo a little bit, hit on the highlights, and then, and then we'll, we'll have a discussion. But treated wood, treated wood waste, what is it? Simplistically, what, what you might see is pressure-treated wood. You go down to the lumberyard and you, you see the indentations on there. That's pressure-treated wood. That's the most common type of, of treated wood. There's other ways. You can, you can soak it, so you might not see the indentations, but effectively it's chemically preserved with, with certain chemicals that are, that are spelled out, I believe, in the, in the hazardous waste law. When officially, treated wood is hazardous waste. About 16 years ago, the, the state, I think in recognition of the, the wide use of, of treated wood, they, they established what's called alternative management standards for, for not just disposal, but, but hauling and, and the, the use of the material. Those alternative management standards do just that. They, they allow for a, a different method of, of handling the material as opposed to following the, the full suite of hazardous waste laws. I think the, the idea there was that it, it allows for a safe way to still allow for this very common material to be, to be safely managed. When that, when those alternative management standards were, were approved, the, the law established a, a sunset date of December 31st, 2020. At that, at that point in time, come January 1st, 2021, in absence of any other action to extend that, the alternative management standards would, would no longer apply for treated wood and, and treated wood waste more particular, and, and it would fall under the, the larger and broader hazardous waste laws. So it would not be an exception to the rule, I guess is a simple way to put it. Earlier this year, well, actually, I should say last year, Senate bill, Senate bill, I don't, it's not here in front of me as it should be, but Senate bill was submitted to, to extend that, actually to, to eliminate the sunset date, so the alternative management standards would continue. That was vetoed by the, by the governor, and, and it put a lot of entities, government agencies, the private industries, cities, counties, everyone in a bit of a flurry because there was no alternative in place to manage this product. So that, that happened at the end, near the end of the calendar year, 2020. And so as of January 1st, 2021, treated wood waste is, is not, there's, there's no exception to it, and it needs to be handled in accordance with hazardous waste laws. RCRC, I'll just kind of touch on that, RCRC, the League of Cities, along with a lot of industry groups have, have pushed, pushed back, trying to en- ensure that there is a way to mitigate this. Right now, the, the East Lake Landfill is, is one of, of a number of landfills around the, the state that were allowed to accept treated wood waste under the alternative management standards. As of January 1st, 2020, excuse me, 2021, the only landfill in the entire state of California as I'm, that I'm aware of, that, that can accept treated wood waste is Button Willow Landfill, about 40 or 50 miles west of, of Bakersfield. So Southern California, outside of California, they have different, different laws, and, and so there, there may be some that are out of state. So bottom line, you know, no less than, no less than five-hour drive away is, is, is close as we're going to get to a, a final resting place for this. So it, it creates a, an issue where not only can we not take it at the landfill legally, but even to haul it somewhere else, as, as might happen if you took it to the transfer station, the Lakeport Transfer Station. Prior to January 1st of this year, all of the treated wood that they would accept would come to the East Lake Landfill. But, but now there, there's no home for it that's, that's local, and I would say no affordable home as well. The cost to dispose of the material at, at Button Willow and most other landfills out of the state are, are three to four times what, what the cost would be at the East Lake Landfill, and that does not even factor in the haul cost. So it's, it, it's very, it's a challenge, and I'm just going to say it's excessively expensive to, to handle it, so there's a lot of concerns. Illegal dumping being one, illegal burning, treated wood is, is not allowed to be burned. So it, it, it creates a, a concern. The, what is currently in the works, and, and what we understand from DTSC and potentially, Craig can, can touch on this a bit, but DTSC is working on, on a variance process. It's, as I understand it, it would be something similar to the alternative management standards, but we, we would have to apply for a variance to, to allow the landfill to continue to accept it. What's unknown is, is who else would need to apply for a variance? Do, do haulers, and would they need to apply for, for a variance? It's, it's unknown. DTSC, to my knowledge, has not released anything. The expectation is that early to mid-February, they would be releasing that information with the intent that the beginning of March, they would start processing and approving the variances. So at, at a minimum, assuming the variance is straightforward, which we don't know if it's, I don't know if it's checking a box or if it has to go through a full CEQA and initial study process, I, we just, we don't know at this point. But at a minimum for the next two months, we will not be able to accept the, the treated wood at the landfill, nor is there a viable option, alternative option for disposal. So the, the, where we are, where we are now is, is waiting on DTSC, and what I've been informing members of the public when they ask, what, what do I do now? I, I've, I've been informing them to, you know, that you have the option of, of hauling it off to Button Willow, which obviously that's, you know, it's just not reasonable to, to be blunt. So it's recommendation to store the material in, and there's a limited amount of time that it can be stored, and it, and it depends upon quantity of, of waste that, that someone has. 90 days or so, and Craig maybe can jump in here at, at any point in time, but 90 days, some, depending upon how much you have, it might be 180 days, but, but there is some period of time where, where the material can be stored, and it has to be stored appropriately. You don't just throw it out on the ground and let it be rained on. It, it has to be covered and, and, and/or up off the ground, if not both. So, so it, that's my recommendation for people right now is to store the material, store it appropriately, and check back in with us, and we will, we will do a, a campaign to ensure people understand, you know, what is being done once we, once we know the variance process. But until we, till we have an alternative, it's store it and, and, and continue to check in with us. And you'll see in the recommended action that, you know, that, that really was the direction that, that I'm recommending, is to pursue this variance process, which, which means track it at this point, find out what it, what it means. Obviously, we'll need to work closely with, with environmental health to identify what, what does that really mean? Not only are they the, the hazardous waste entity, but they, they're also the, the enforcement agent for the landfill itself on behalf of CalRecycle. So, so we, we work very closely with them, and I, I appreciate Craig being on the call. The short-term process or the short-term solution is that, that variance, and that's, you know, really looked at as only a six-month to one-year solution. That was meant to be a stopgap measure, as, as best I can understand from DTSC, because they were caught off guard by the governor's veto as well. Otherwise, I think a lot of this would have been in place had, had there not been any legislation proposed to, to eliminate the sunset. But in, the, the short-term solution would be the variance. Long-term is a, what they anticipate and hope to be a, a legislative solution to this. So, so with that, I, I'd like to offer and ask Craig to, you know, fill in any, any gaps there, correct me where I was wrong, and, and then happy to take any questions after that.
Thanks, Lars. So, yeah, it's very important. Lars touched on this. This was something, actually not something completely a surprise, not only to the regulated community, but to the regulatory community as well. We got notice on this roughly in October, which, looking at the scope of what this change is, going from a relatively easily managed non-hazardous waste product to a full-fledged hazardous waste product, there's a lot of moving parts, and it takes a lot of work to try and come up with a way of dealing with these. So this was definitely something that we were not expecting on our side either. So I wanted to really stress that. We've been working with Lars pretty much since October now to try and figure out what's going to happen. It's important to look at what the state is providing to us at this point, and right now they're providing very little. They know that it is a hazardous material, and it, when disposed, becomes hazardous waste, which means that it now is subject to the full scope of the hazardous waste laws, as well as the initial hazardous materials, like things like hazardous material business plan reporting and stuff like that. So this becomes a much larger product, project from a regulatory side that we are looking at. We are a dual regulator in the case of the landfill and of the transfer station, whereas we are their regulator for solid waste for CalRecycle, and we are also the regulator for the hazardous material and hazardous waste side of it as well. So we now have our checklist for including hazardous waste, treated wood waste in the inspections, and our inspector will start enforcing that as of Monday, although we have none scheduled at the moment that would have any impact on the landfill. In terms of the, the variance, the state has said they are going to have something in place. What that is, looks like, what that will cover, and when that will be available are all question marks that we have not yet been informed on by DTSC. Anytime we push it, we're working on it. So I know that they are frantically trying to put this in place, but at the moment, we really don't have any way to plan, because we don't know what's going to be available to the landfill. What we're, biggest concern is right now is that as people continue to have their treated wood waste denied at the landfill, we may start seeing an uptick in illegal dumping of the material. Everybody's already seen the large piles of garbage that get left at the side of the road by people. I'm concerned that this will now start including some of the hazardous materials, particularly treated wood waste. And unfortunately, a lot of the times that people dump, I don't know why, but they seem to really enjoy basically cliff sides that go right into creeks. And treated wood waste, when it comes into contact with water, will start leaching out some of those very dangerous chemicals, things like arsenic, cadmium, some things that I don't even prefer to try to describe because they're very hard to pronounce. But we are very concerned that that's going to start happening. We are working with board or with Lars to try and find ways to deal with this, but there's just nothing we have until roughly February. And I would like to point out that there is a difference between treated wood waste and pressure-treated wood. Pressure-treated wood is a usable product. We are not regulating people's usable product. So that means if you have a pile of treated wood waste that you're going to be using on your deck or you're building something with, that does not immediately become hazardous waste. It isn't until that product is deemed no longer useful for its intended purpose that it becomes a waste product. At that point, the regulations come into play for the treated wood waste portion of it. So we want to make that perfectly clear that, you know, for folks that do have this product on their, on their properties and they have every intention of using it, we're not talking about that for its, its intended useful purpose.
Thank you, Craig. And then just a couple of follow-up points. To piggyback on the, pressure-treated wood, any, any treated wood is, is only treated wood waste when it's, when it's done with its useful life. So I appreciate you, you commenting on that, because people who have the stuff stored right now with, with an intent to use it in the future, that is not treated wood waste once. But if, but if you're storing it with the intent of disposing it, then it, it just falls into a different category. Really quickly, the landfill, why we can, why we were allowed to accept the, the treated wood previously. There, there are three levels of, of landfills in the state of California. Class 1 is a, is a fully permitted hazardous waste facility like, like Button Willow that is allowed to take hazardous waste. Our landfill is, is the, the lowest. It's a class 3 landfill, but we do have a, a liner, which basically means a, a plastic sheeting. I mean, you know, more than you might go down at your, at your lumberyard and pick up, but it's, it's lined underneath all the waste, and it prevents a, a, a good amount of the material from leaching underneath that. So, so we, we are allowed to dispose of the treated wood only in the portion of our landfill. So, and because we are a class 3 landfill, and there is an intermediate level, the class 2 landfills, that it just, they have a. it just, they have a, they're kind of right in the middle as far as what they can accept, I have concerns that even with the variance process, that we may not be allowed to accept it in the short term. We just, we don't know what DTSC may say. They may indicate that Class 2 landfills with a liner can accept, but a Class 3 landfill cannot, in which case we would be, for the short term, in a very rough spot. So I appreciate Craig answering those questions and I, you know, welcome to get any input from the board.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I will add that I've been in contact with Lars about this as well as RCRC and the level of unpreparedness on the stake is very evident when there are only three landfills capable of taking pressure-treated wood, but only one has actually obtained the permits to be allowed to do so because the other two felt it was not necessary because so many other landfills were allowed to do so because of having the similar situation as us where it was a lined Class 3 landfill. And so the state has, it was a strange situation where both the Assembly and the Senate unanimously passed to move this forward, yet vetoed by the governor and not submitted for a vote against the veto by the House or the Senate at all. So definitely a strange situation with unexpected consequences and the regulatory body of the state is definitely not prepared. In a comment that I received from them, which you've heard from the presentation, by February, we'll have figured out what the variance look like and that also we haven't talked about is what is the cost of such a variance? They don't even know yet or who will be paying for the cost. So it's a very, it's a messy situation, definitely, and I appreciate Director Ewing bringing this to us for us to consider what are our options and what can we do? Any comments or suggestions or questions from the board?
No, I think just my comment would be going with the recommendation of Lars. Thank you very much for bringing it and then looking at a long-term fix. So appreciate giving the opportunity for, to go up to the variance and then looking at the long-term fix, which I think will come through CSAC or RCRC on a legislative fix, just as you said.
All right.
Yeah, I, obviously we have to, did you lose me?
No, you're still here. We just don't have your video.
Obviously, we have to go after this variance and have a long-term plan for this. I have just recently built a house and the amount of waste that comes out of building a house with pressure-treated wood and partially painted wood is unreal. And so, you know, you're going to have houses with piles of garbage around them that they can't get rid of or it's going to be cut up and put in the garbage cans anyway. We have a housing deficit in our county and we have to focus on getting housing rebuilt. So this just adds another financial burden, you know, and one more expensive hurdle that we really can't afford.
Supervisor, if I could comment on that quickly, I just, I don't want to mislead anyone about treated wood or painted wood. Treated wood is one thing, painted wood is another. So clarity that you're right, there's a lot of waste that comes out of a building, but, you know, Craig, painted wood is not necessarily hazardous, it's not treated in the same way as treated wood. It can't be placed in a burn pile and burned, but it can be disposed of at our landfill separate from the alternative management standards. Craig, help me out there from around, but I'm fairly certain that that's the case and I didn't want to.
That's correct, my understanding. We're specifically dealing with a chemically treated, either pressure or soaked wood containing specific chemicals, things like creosote, arsenic, cadmium and so forth.
Right. But that does not, I'm sorry to interrupt, that does not change your point that there is a lot of waste that needs to be dealt with in an environmentally friendly manner.
Right, and we can't let something like this slow down housing being built.
And if I may add to that, I think Supervisor Pyska's point is a poignant one for the fact that it's not just our problem. I don't understand how a state who is in a housing crisis as a whole can create this type of situation in such a surprising and messy way. We are in an immense housing deficit in the entire state and this is impacting every community that's trying to rebuild especially, or trying to build, especially those trying to rebuild. This is just a very confusing situation. I'd like to make a suggestion that we also reach out, and I have not done so, I've been working through RCRC with John Kennedy, that's been working hand-in-hand with CSAC and legislation as well to try and figure out how to solve this, working with the regulatory body to try to figure out what kind of variances are available, again, with very little to no response on where it is going to guide us. But I'd like to work with our state representatives about looking at the potential of making a slight change to the legislation that was vetoed, which is just put it back in with the sunset clause. Instead of getting rid of the sunset clause that this is forever, that these types of landfills can collect this type of waste, put a sunset clause back on so that it can be another conversation later, but not to the point that it's putting us in a situation where everybody's trying to figure out how it is that we're going to handle pressure-treated or treated wood and how it is that we're going to afford to get those things down to the right places. So I would suggest that not only do we follow the recommendation, but we also reach out to our state representatives to see how we can try to replace that bill back on.
I would like to add something, if I may.
Please.
The sheer bulk of treated wood waste that we see used in the field, almost exclusively by utilities companies and vineyards, that's where the large bulk of the material is going to be coming from. Vineyards have been phasing out of treated wood waste for, I'd probably say about five to 10 years now, but there are still plenty of vineyards out there that are pulling those stakes and need a place to dispose of them. So this could disproportionately impact the agricultural, particularly the vineyard communities that are trying to gain their CCOF certifications for organic and so forth. This is a, could be a very large problem for them.
All right. Any further comments or questions from the board before we open it up for the public? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room, please Jake. I see none here in the boardroom.
All right, so I have sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room for, if you would like to make a comment, please unmute and stay here, first and last name.
Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and bring him back to the board for action and direction, or just direction, I guess.
I think I made my point, obviously. Lars, thank you for bringing with your direction of action. I completely agree with the path that you've laid out for us.
All right, great, well, I appreciate it and one other point is Solid Waste Task Force would be meeting later this month. This is one of the topics for their agenda, obviously, pending the results of that, but more importantly, pending the results of what we find out from DTSC. I'll certainly be back and I hope I can say "we" to include environmental health and Craig come back to update you on, yeah, what we can do, not just at the landfill, but all the generators and the haulers of the users of the material. So I appreciate your understanding and your time here at the end of the day.
Okay, and just want to make sure we have a consensus.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, Director Ewing, and thank you very much, Craig Weatherby.
Thank you.
So I'm feeling a little awkward because we've spent a long time and still no lunch. I know we have two items left, which is our closed session and also the one pulled consent agenda. It is 2:10. I was told that our closed session will last no more than about five minutes. Take that with a grain of salt and...
No, no, it's not, 15 minutes, not five.
15 minutes, I was told it was 15 minutes and also the item 5.3 is only about, I would say a five-minute item of just clarification and no more. However, that doesn't always work out that way. Looking for direction from the board because I am leaning towards, we need to just break for lunch, we've been at this for too long for staff and we need to take that break.
We need to take a break.
Okay, so come back at 2:45?
Yeah, I'm behind you there.
Let's go ahead and break to 2:45, we'll come back and reconvene for item 5.3 in our closed session. Jake, are you ready for us?
Jaram.
Love the attitude. You can really make someone's day, Jake.
Hey, I do my best, all right?
And I see that moch is up. All right, that's everybody. All right, thank you very much, welcome back. It is 2:46, let's go ahead and get started with item 5.3 that was pulled from the consent agenda. Approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Deborah Sally, DVM, for veterinary services for the remainder of 2020-2021 fiscal year in the amount of $8,000 and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. So I'll just quickly explain why I pulled it. In reading the contract with Dr. Sally, it stated on there, if I can find it soon enough... Yes, right here on page four of the PDF document, County Responsibilities, it says, and no more than $25,000 annually. And so this contract amount did not match the memo or the agenda item that stated it was for $8,000. I did speak with Jonathan Armis, our director, oh, and there he is, and so hopefully he can clarify that for us.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Supervisors. Yeah, it's just a clerical error on the contract. I based off a contract we used in previous years that would last a whole fiscal year. We're in kind of a special circumstance right now where it requires that we need at least service for about a month right now and that's why we think it's no more than $8,000 and not $25,000. So it's just a little leftover.
Okay, so I was just looking to change that on the agreement and then be able to move forward. Is there any comments or questions from the board on this item? Okay, there's nobody here in the chambers for public comment? Any public comment from the Zoom room? Jake?
All right, let's get this unmute request out. That request has been sent. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Deborah Sally, DVM, for veterinary services for the remainder of the 2020-2021 fiscal year in the amount of $8,000 and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. Should I add that we...
And fix the agreement.
And amended and fixed the agreement contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Johanna, if we can get a roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott? Supervisor Pyska?
She's...
muted.
Jake, you may need to unmute her.
Sorry, I dropped off again. Yes.
Okay, and Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, motion carries, let's go ahead and move on. Closed session, item number 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, Citizens for Environmental Protection and Responsible Planning versus County of Lake Ita. 8.2, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2E3, claim of Lily. 8.3, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, Sabaloni versus County of Lake. And that will consist our entire closed session. I don't believe I've missed anything else on our agenda, let me know if I have and if we have not, then we will go ahead and move on into our closed session.
You've covered it all, Mr. Chair. I have asked the tech team to put the board and myself and county council in a breakout room so that you may have the option of returning to this room to announce any action you may have taken.
Awesome.
So board members will just stand by. Jessica, you're going to have a whole new meeting to beam me up, Jake. So I just want to make sure our team is back with us. Johanna, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Jake and Sam, thank you, Johanna. Jake and Sam?
Yes.
Are we ready to go?
We are ready to go.
Okay.
All right, at least Jake, are we ready to go on your end?
Yep, all good.
All right, we are out of closed session. Any action taken in closed session?
No action to be taken, Mr. Chair.
Yes, there is.
There is, sorry. So I wasn't in on the last one, that's what it was.
Ms. Grant, would you be able to provide the motion, please?
I would, thank you. This is in reference to 8.2, the claim of Lily. The motion would be to move to approve the claimant's out-of-pocket costs in relation to the settlement of their claim in the amount of $7,662.74.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. If we can get a roll call, please, Johanna.
Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye. There's something that just makes everybody smile by hearing that noise.
I know.
Now we're trying to vote.
All right, that ends our meeting today. Thank you so much, everybody. We'll see you next week on January 12th. Have a good day.
If you just stay right here, we can do agenda review here as well, if Jake will make me the...
Thank you.